All right, we'll call the meeting to order.
This meeting is being recorded.
In accordance with the open meeting law, the board stays for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Norham and may be recorded by other local media. This is a hybrid meeting of the select board and it's also being broadcasted via Zoom by the town. You please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All set, Mr. Gilberto?
Yes.
Okay. And our first order of business is to sign the bans, bonds. We have lengthy motions and presentation, right? No presentation. We don't need a presentation for this. We need a little presentation.
I can give you--
Go ahead. Welcome, Ms. Rohr, our finance director is here.
Thank you. Good evening. Some of you may know that two weeks ago, we had a bond rating call. Our AA2 rating was maintained and we were pleased with that as we were not going into this issuance looking for an upgrade or anything like that. We continue to build policies and procedures so that, you know, you can explore an upgrade, but AA2 is still a good rating. So we have a ban sale and we have a bond sale. I'll quickly review the ban sale. So the ban sale, we short-term borrowed the water interconnection land purchase and that's for Nine Mill Street. And since that is still an open item, we have to continue to short-term borrow that. If we long-term borrow it, then we would be stuck with a permanent debt. The other item is the high school, middle school. That's a ban as well and we will continue to ban on that. And then we have two design studies. One is for the town center sewer design. You will see in a few moments when we review the FY23 capital plan and capital submissions that the town sewer, you know, actual construction work was submitted for FY23. And Don Keller will, the chair of CIPC, will go over that. And the reason why that was banned is because we will roll that design into the long-term borrowing of that project. And if we didn't do that, then we would only be able to long-term borrow the design piece for five years. And lastly is the intersection study design. And we have some intersection construction that was submitted for FY23 capital. So you will see that momentarily when Don Keller goes over that. So we have, you know, when those go long-term reconstruction, the design piece will go with it so that we can borrow longer for the entire project. We would only be able to borrow five years for that as well.
Okay.
So that's the ban sale.
Just questions, couple of questions. Anybody have questions? None. I have a couple, if that's all right. When is the last time our rating was upgraded?
So I've been here 10 and a half years and it has stayed at AA2. Don Keller or Abby Herwood might know better.
I think I recall after--
Steve, you know?
I do not. I do not recall.
And you mentioned--
Though we've argued that we should have a better rating.
Yes. You mentioned this too about your thoughts in terms of, or your goals in terms of improving that, which would be the fiscal policies.
Yes, so a few of the things that, you know, help communities go for bond rating increase. And we've, you know, sat with our financial advisors, Hilltop Securities, and asked them, you know, what more can we do, this and that. So policies definitely because they feel that if you have a policy, you know, whether it's stabilization, which we do have a policy for that, or, you know, a capital improvement, a plan policy, a free cash policy, you know, anything like that to show, or an OPEB policy, you know, they're very pleased to see that annually now we, you know, through the razor appropriate process, budget for OPEB, they like to see those type of consistencies. They also like to see you build your reserves. And so when I say reserves, it's the different stabilization funds. Whether it's a regular stabilization or a debt capital stabilization, you know, you create another special purpose stabilization, you know, they like to see that. They also, you know, they see that we had the sale of town-owned land, but they view that as one-time revenue and that eventually we would use that for some large project or, you know, pay for debt service and things like that. So they somewhat discount that from us because it is not considered a restricted-use item, whereas a stabilization fund requires two-thirds vote, sale of town-owned land does not. So those are some of the things that we can work on. The town administrator, myself, Mr. O'Leary has been involved in the past. Former select board member, Michael Prisbo was involved. The treasurer collector, you know, we've had numerous, even with the outside auditor as well, to see what we can do. So we will work with our new outside auditor to see if maybe they have some ideas, sample fiscal policies and things like that.
Oh, that's great. And I have another question, and this might be from Ms. Gilberto, but we've talked about the sale of Nine Mill Street, didn't we? Wouldn't, if we had sold this, and it seems like the prime opportunity to sell it, that comes off of the debt service list, so why are we not selling that, especially right now?
So, through your matter of fact, the challenge we've had is that the way in which we properly retain upland area for any potential future municipal use while still selling the lot and having the lot be a usable lot. We struggled with whether we needed to adjust zoning, going through some sort of an A&R plan. And it, I think that what we're finding is it's looking more and more like expanding the purpose of the existing easements on the property that we have for a water line, maybe the cleanest way for us to turn around and sell this up, the property fairly quickly. So that's something that we'll bring back up with the wastewater working group. I know Mr. Clark has worked on it over the past few months and I know Joe has had put some time into it as well. But I think we can bring it to conclusion and I believe we already have authority from town meeting to sell the property.
Okay, because I mean--
How much, how much is the carrying cost on Mill Street?
The amount authorized was 750,000 and the previous issuances is what, 632? We've had to do some ban pay downs because it has been longer than two years that we have short-term borrowed for it. So renewal this issue was 632,000 and we have a pay down of 27,000. We earned a premium of close to $3,500.
So basically it's costing us--
It's costing us money, yes. We have to pay for the interest, which is, you know, on short-term borrowing, you pay just interest. And because we have borrowed longer than two years, we have to pay pay downs each year. So, you know, between 40,000, now we're down to 30,000. It, you know, it just depends on the rate that we get. So for the bans, we got a net interest cost of 2.439%. But the same goes for the high school, middle school. You know, we've had to have pay downs on that as well. But that's one that right now we are advised to not long-term borrow on at this point. That project is not closed yet.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Are we all set?
Think we should sell it yesterday.
I mean, I would agree with that hardly because if we could work with the developers, developer's gonna buy it or, you know, someone's gonna develop it. So we could work on those outstanding issues in a, you know--
The issue is retaining, as I understand it, Mr. Gilberto. The issue is trying to get access to the rear of the property.
You're so soft-spoken, we can't hear you.
Right. On the off chance that we need that at some point in distant future, for if we were to hook into NWRI, for example, that would have been the spot that was used for the pumping station, which is why we purchased it. In my estimation, we were taking advantage of when we bought the property. And since we're now doing NWRA, I think we need to come up with a very good reason for retaining the property as a whole. Or as I believe the town is now trying to do, figure out a way to access the rear of the property and yet still have a reasonable dwelling we could resell.
Pretty basically an easement agreement with the buyer, if it's ever needs to be--
I'm not looking into it.
Well, but, okay. That's just one aspect of it, but maybe we can see a plan. Maybe we can see a plan on that or see where we're at, keep some track of that. Next meeting, see where we're at with that one. Because I know we've been talking about that for a long time. Couple of years now since we--
Multiple.
--entered a 99-year agreement for our water with the end over, so. Okay, and we could use that money for all the things that we need. So do we have a motion?
So Juan would, hang on.
Get your cups of coffee and tea out.
Madam Chair, you might want to announce to the public that we have--
Oh, yes. And in case you were wondering, we had a little bit of an organizational shakeup. So Mr. Studo is now the vice chair. I'm still the chair, Mr. Studo's the vice chair. And we have happily appointed Mr. Walner as our clerk. I'm not sure how happy--
He's not so happy.
Not everybody voted today.
Not tonight.
All right, here it goes. I, Richard Walner, the clerk of the select board of the town of North Reading, Massachusetts, certified that in a meeting of the board held May 9, 2022, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and in which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed for the proceeds of the $65,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed June 5, 2021, Article 21, is hereby determined pursuant to GLC 4471 to be as follows. Purpose: Tool Cap 5600. Borrowing Amount: 65,000. Maximum Useful Life: 10 years. Further voted that the sale of the $6,205,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds of the town dated May 26, 2022, to Janie Montgomery Scott LLC at the price of $6,602,628.84 and accrued interest of any is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on May 15th in years and in the principal amounts and bearer interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2023: 410,000, 5%. 2024: 400,000, 5%. 2025: 400,000, 5%. 2026: 395,000, 5%. 2027: 390,000, 5%. 2028: 380,000, 5%. 2029: 380,000, 5%. 2030: 380,000, 5%. 2031: 375,000, 5%. 2032: 365,000, 5%. 2033: 290,000, 4%. 2034: 290,000, 4%. 2035: 290,000, 4%. 2036: 280,000, 4%. 2037: 280,000, 4%. 2042: 900,000, 4%. Further voted that the bonds--
Excuse me, can I just, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
Is it, should this be motion to vote, motion made? Or does it have to be, it's presuming that we voted on all this and--
Did you begin with, "I moved that"?
No, it's just--
It just, I'm just reading right through.
It's not reading like that.
I'm reading exactly what it says.
He's stating what we already voted and unfortunately, we didn't actually vote yet. So it should be motion, motion to.
So friendly amendment would be, "I moved that," the clerk. That you begin with, "I moved that," rather than--
You have the start over?
No. No, you don't.
Yeah, so instead of further voted, which we haven't, we, just for the interest of those attending, we haven't voted on any of this yet. That's the whole purpose of us convening and hearing.
So change, approve, or do I move?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Sorry. All right, I'll continue on. I moved to approve the sale of, oh, sorry. I moved that the bonds maturing on May 15, 2042, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond due May 15, 2042. In year 2038: 180,000. 2039: 180,000. 2040: 180,000. 2041: 180,000. 2042, which is final maturity, at 180,000. I also moved to approve the sale of $5,727,577, 3% general obligation bond anticipation note to the town dated May 27, 2022 and payable May 25, 2023, to Piper Sandler Company and part accrued interest, if any, plus premium of $31,673.50. I moved that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, preparation and distribution of a notice of sale in preliminary official statement dated April 28, 2022, and a final official statement dated May 5, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. I further moved that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale preliminary official statement dated April 27, 2022, and final official statement dated May 5, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. I moved that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the bond official statement. I moved that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(2) through 12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking this shall be incorporated by reference to the bonds and notes as applicable to the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. I moved that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient or if such procedures are occurring in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the taxes exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. I moved that any certificates or documents related to the bonds and the notes may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. I moved that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute, deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes will be taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote is taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or the, on the municipal building at the office the town clerk is loaded or, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed by, approved by the attorney general as set forth in 94CMR 29.03 to be at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted to the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds and notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general laws. See Chapter 38, 18 through 25, S. Mandant.
Second.
That's a motion by Mr. Walner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Need my water?
We did receive, as part of that, I guess, omnibus motion, we did receive from our treasurer, and she usually does speak with us with regard to the bans and the bidding on the bans. And we do have a memo, I'm sorry to call you out to speak about it, but we did receive your memo instructing us that the low bid was from Piper Sandler and Company and that's who the, that's who should be awarded the sale of the ban. So we're, that was incorporated into the motions that were just read. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Rohr.
Yes, I just want to note that as part of that motion also was included $6,525,000 of long-term bonds. And the rate on that is 3.51%. And that was the lowest bidder from Janie Amon, Montgomery Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Rohr. Yes. Okay. Good. Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
I am.
It's unanimous.
Good thing. He said it was gonna be.
Oh, there's more. Right?
No.
Nope, this will be one motion.
Was one long collection of motions.
There are documents to be signed besides the motion, yes. Including a certification that matches what you just wrote. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, our next order, our next order of business is a vote to sign the June 6, 2022 town meeting warrant. Ms. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you is the warrant for the June 6, 2022 annual town meeting. The draft resembles the version that you have seen in prior discussions with the very notable addition of language relative to the sewer betterment bylaw amendment recommended by the Department of Public Works. Madam Chair, we normally go into the detailed discussion of these prior to the vote taking place. This is a bit of a rare instance where the language is coming into the board in its recommended form this evening. If you'd like, I have the finance, the public works director here this evening. Prior to your vote to execute the warrant, you could take a presentation from him. Otherwise, we could take that presentation later on in the evening as part of your warrant article recommendations, but the article would already be on the warrant at that point. So if any wish to hear from him now.
All right, I think that's important for us because it's been a blank sheet every time we've talked about this for the past couple of months. So now that it's in the packet, I think we need some explanation of that because we really haven't had time to read through it. So please, why don't you come up and join us at the table or at the podium, whatever you're more comfortable with.
My speaker here.
All right, if you don't mind pulling the microphone close to you. We can hear you, but people at home can't hear you unless you talk into that. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. So tonight I'd like to give you a little bit of explanation as to the request or proposal to modify the existing betterment bylaw. So I think we have a little PowerPoint that we can launch. The current bylaws relating to betterments cover not just sewer that we're talking about tonight, but also for private road conversions and some other private road repairs and also water betterments as well. They all seem to be under the same general guidance or requirement that the town pay for 50% of the betterments. And you'll see, I believe you have some draft language in your packets, that you will see that that's the case for, you know, sewer betterments as well. And as we are starting the planning and also the design of a pretty significant sewer project, you know, I was looking at the betterment bylaw and really seeing an opportunity to, you know, have some changes that, you know, make sense for this project but also makes sense for, you know, potentially other sewer expansions that may happen, you know, in the future in different areas close to the sewer, proposed sewer project. So I want to talk about, you know, why the changes are being proposed. So the town of North Reading is currently planning, resigning, as I just spoke, a municipal wastewater project and we're connecting, propose to connect to the greater Lawrence County district. The current bylaws relating to sewer betterments require that the town pay 50% of the cost of the betterments, providing no flexibility to the town to assess otherwise. And the current bylaws do not provide sufficient framework and assessment methodology through references to master law relating to sewer betterment assessments. So again, I think there is some very standard language. I have spoken with KP Law in regards to, you know, what other communities are using. They've, you know, made recommendation and have proposed it and have approved bylaw changes. So if you go to the next page, we'll see, you know, one, what does it say now? And then we'll talk about what we're proposing to do, so. All right, so the sewer betterments like those for private street betterments, water main improvements, when funds are made available, require the town to provide 50% of the necessary funds for sewer betterments. And at the public hearing, if a majority of the property owners resigning on a street and representing a majority of the estimated water usage, vote in favor of the construction of the sewer improvements and the acceptance of the cost for construction, then the public works department would recommend to the select board that this project be placed on a list for construction. So again, it would be subject to availability of funds, which is kind of, you know, sort of unknown exactly how that would be determined to be a fundable project, but I would imagine that the list would be developed and somehow funds would be available to go down the list of projects. So at the public hearing though, the abuddies would also be given a not-to-exceed assessment cost estimate based on estimated usage, typically defined, you know, in the Title V codes. So the final assessment is the lower of either the actual cost of the project when you complete the project and figure the final cost or when you compare it to the estimated assessment. If it's lower, that's what will be charged. The actual remaining costs are still going to be subject then to the town paying that cost that was above and beyond the estimate. So what would we like it to say? So what would we like it to say? So the requirement for the town to specifically pay fifty percent of the betterment costs is eliminated by the first section of the betterment bylaws. The select board or town meeting can choose to assess up to one hundred percent of the project costs to property owners receiving the benefit of new sewer system. So the amount of the project cost to be assessed is then apportioned into costs to be immediately assessed to sewer abutting property owners as sewer betterments, and those costs to be reserved for sewer privilege fees assessments in the future to non-abutting properties that connect to the sewer line at a later date. So as would typically happen, you know, we do construct a sewer line, and people will connect, we will be providing sewer stubs for them to connect if they are abutting the sewer project, but those properties that may be one parcel behind, or a street that comes in later through another connection, another expansion, those are all subject to sewer privilege fees for the cost of typically what was charged in the betterment, so that they would share in the cost of the sewer project. And there's capacity designed into the system so that, you know, they can connect. We are building a system not just for today's abutting properties, but potential growth of the town of those properties, but also connections of additional properties that we may find in the future need to connect for failure of Title V or what have you. So all abutting properties, so that's basically the assessment of, you know, separating the cost of the project that was determined to be charged as betterments into two groups, those that are going to be bettered and those that will be receiving a fee later if they in fact do connect. The select board may also separate the cost of general benefits facilities, such as pump stations, trunks, and forced mains, from that of special benefit facilities, such as sewer mains serving abutted properties. So basically, you have pump stations that are going to be receiving flow from not just those that are connecting today, but those that will connect tomorrow. So, you know, we have future, I guess, capacity, and we want to design the system to have that capacity because we know that there will be need for that in the future, and again, either for the growth of the existing properties that are connecting today, and/or other properties that may see some environmental needs in the future. So we have a system that has, you know, a trunk line that goes down right through twenty-eight, and also North Street to Lowell, and also Park Street onto Concord. And so that's fine of a sewer expansion project, really touches the majority of properties in our industrial, commercial industrial areas, and it does cross over into some of the residential properties as well. So that's the basis of the changes.
Do we have questions? Mr. Wallner?
Sure, back to the map.
So finally, like if we take this as an example, these people will immediately get assessed?
That is correct. Anybody that assess, that fronts the sewer would get assessed. So it'd be along North Street from the intersection of Main, all the way down to Lowell, and yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I do. In the draft that was provided to us in the warrant article, I don't read it the same way that you're explaining it, and I think it's very misleading. So where you're starting out in your draft saying that the town, you strike the language, will provide fifty percent of the necessary funds, and it just says the town will assess betterments approved through the processes outlined below, and then the betterment, the next process that's outlined is for private streets where, on the vote of the majority of the people that are there for private abuttes, we pay fifty percent of that. So that's the very next thing under the following process, and then you strike out sewers in the public water supply, and that's assessed at a different type, which is the uniform unit method. And then the third method that you're adding in there is sewer betterments that we acting as soon, the board acting, that is, a sewer commissioners, may assess one hundred percent based on the uniform unit method, which is not defined in this. So does that mean that we could assess the cost in any one of those three methods? Because that's how I read it as a layperson. That's how I would read this proposed change in the bylaw.
So the initial change is to just make it specific to the sections of the street and water, and now the added sewer. So whatever those sections detail as far as, you know, percentages of the project to be bettered, that's still enforced. What was, the intent here was to first, you know, strike the fifty percent applied to all those categories, and then be specific in the sewer as being up to one hundred percent of the project cost can be assessed, instead of just sort of making it fifty percent for all cases. Now, I did have to, in going through the water section of the existing bylaw, is strike all the sewer language, which allowed us to make it a separate section, as you can see how we laid that out in the bylaw.
Is there a reason, then, why you incorporated in the proposed bylaw? If there was no change to section twenty-five-two, why is that in here for proposed amendments? I'm not seeing anything.
So, yeah, so twenty-five-two, I guess, still didn't really strike anything. I made the whole section, or kept the whole section intact for your view, where you can see the changes that were being made. And so none were made in the street sidewalks and store and room section.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Can you, I'm going to go back to Mr. Wallner's question and just clarify a little more. So anybody on that line, even if they do not choose, can they choose whether they want to hook up or not, or is it an option?
So it is an option whether they want to connect, it is not an option whether they, you know, are assessed a sewer betterment or not. So they're being assessed for a portion of the cost of the project for the street work. Each property individually has its own cost to connect to a sewer lateral that they will be left at their property project.
So from their property to the hookup, is that what they pay?
They share the cost of the entire project, some portion of it. There's capacity that would be, I guess, reserved for other sewer privilege fee assessments. But whatever is a portion to be placed on a betterment assessment, everybody gets that based on a number of sewer units that their property is determined to have. The basis is a single-family home. So you would have a single-family home having, you know, one betterment assessment, but you could have a restaurant that equates to water use of a single-family home of three or four or five times that amount. And so, you know, those are the betterment assessments, and you won't see that in detail, but that is an example of uniform unit method, you know, when you use water use, either actual water use or Title V water use. And those are the things that you wouldn't normally see in a bylaw. The bylaw gives you some framework to work with, but, you know, the details of how you do the assessments are worked out to conform to the bylaws that are passed. So in continuing, you know, your question, they will not have to connect and pay individually for the cost to go from their house to the lateral on their property line. They can choose to do that at a later time unless for some reason there was some failure of their septic system that the border held mandates that they connect. But they will be assessed, and, you know, they have a choice to pay for it over a number of years, twenty or thirty years, a, you know, the betterment on their tax bills.
Mrs. Gonzalez, you outside? Mr. Stu, though?
So the simplest way to put it that I'm understanding is to give the town maximum flexibility. That, I mean, it's a lot more technical, as you've described, but it seems like, again, it's just maximum flexibility for a big project, that there's still a lot of variables, rather than having to work around an early country framework. It seems like that's, I'm sorry, I'm using that word, but that's, it seems like it's pretty, under the current rule or bylaw, there's only one way to really go about it.
Yeah, it's pretty rigid the way it is, and it really doesn't make good reference to master law. I think for those both reasons, yes, I think flexibility and having some better framework tied to master law is appropriate, what we're doing here today.
Any other questions? Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, just furthering up. So the betterment is, lasts as long as the, it takes to pay off the project? Is that how that works?
Yeah, pretty much so. The master law did require, you know, usually requires twenty years, but if a bond, put me on the page, it's saying, or K P Law is saying, that if a bond is out there for thirty years, you can actually increase abortment to their tax bill for thirty years as well. So it helps the affordability factor of that.
Does it, I mean, I think some people are going to object. Do they have any legal recourse to object?
Well, there's legal recourse to file an abatement request, but just like in real estate, there has to be some good reason for it. And they have their opportunity to present that, and if that was even denied at the local level, they have a right to appeal it to the law.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
So just to try and simplify it a little bit, what we did is we just called out the sewerage portion of the current bylaw. We called that out, and we're going to handle that a little bit differently. We're going to allow the board, and again, if the actions of the board are not satisfactory, town meeting can override the board in relation to what the allocation's going to be. If we just left the bylaw as it was, the general populace here, the taxpayers as a whole, would have to absorb at least fifty percent, well, would have to absorb fifty percent of the cost of all of this, rather than the users. And as we know, this isn't covering the entire community. So what we're looking to do is provide the board, and future boards, the opportunity to appropriately allocate the costs, the carrying costs, of the project itself, more or less, more to the users, and as more users come on, there'll be greater relief to the general populace as a whole. Because as more people come on, they're going to assume some of the costs associated with building out of the project. So the current bylaw doesn't allow that to happen. The taxpayers would have to, as a whole, have to absorb more of the costs upfront and for the entire length of the project, the financing of the project, and that isn't necessarily fair either in relation to the project, specific project that we're proposing here. So the rest of the bylaw pretty much stays the same as far as the fifty-fifty split on those other portions, whether it be water or private streets and all the rest. But for sewerage, we just called that out and allowed the board the flexibility, acting as basically sewer commissioners, to establish what the split's going to be. So, and again, as far as the betterments, to Mrs. Gonzalez's question, anybody along the route is going to get bettered. They're going to have a cost associated with that because they have the opportunity, whether they decide to avail themselves of it, the value of their property, and the opportunity to tie in is there.
I understand.
So what they're going to do is, if they choose not to, they're still going to have the betterment assessed, they just won't have a sewer bill, you know, until they do.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, just one other, because we've been talking about, I mean, for years, there's been talk about dividing up the property tax between commercial and residential. Right? And so, you know, you have homes that are on this route that obviously are not income-generating, there are expenses for that, and you're going to have some businesses that might use as much water as a house, but they're very profitable. Is there any secondary adjustment that's going to happen for their commercial properties that really don't take the sewer, but they're going to benefit from the highway just by location and being on this for future? I'm just wondering if there's some adjustment, because, again, you have households that are, this is an expense, versus businesses where maybe not using the water, but they're going to get a huge benefit. The landlords are going to get, the people who own the land are going to get a huge benefit, and not empty up as much as I think we're asking the residential people to do. Any comment about that? Just wondering how we split that up.
Yeah, so we are looking at, you know, unit methods that have the ability to assess on various different methods, and one would be the actual water use, and we are finding that there's some issues with that. You do have some, you know, income-generating commercial properties that use very little water, and have great potentials, you know, if they're just a warehouse with a restroom or a couple of restrooms, but the potential there, obviously, with sewers, is pretty significant. And there are, you know, other gas stations that, you know, may be on small lots and little water use. So there's also a way of looking at it Title V, regardless of what they're actually using and what that property would have to design their septic system for, and that typically is a larger number than what their actual water use is. So that sort of helps to sort of even, you know, the assessments a little bit further, recognizing what the commercial properties, you know, could be doing. And then one step further, you could do a Title V determination on the highest and best use of the property, regardless of what that property is currently constructed as. Based on the current zoning, it could be something that is higher yielding as far as a Title V water use goes. And so you collect, assess, and collect all that potential upfront, as opposed to an assessment, say, of, you know, Title V for the current use.
Yep.
But we do have, or would like to have, and I think this is where there's another discussion to be had about special legislation for increase in use of the property after the assessment. So, you know, looking at a number of different communities, it's something that tends to be termed compensatory sewer privilege fees, and that just means, we're going to assess you now for what you are, and then if you determine or decide to have some change in use, we can capture the differential in what we assessed you and what you pull a permit to build.
Well, that seems, that just seems fair to me. That seems fair to me, because I think that's going to happen. Is that going to get worked in the legislature, or is that something different? I don't know the complexity.
It's our, I believe it's our intent to work with K P Law to, you know, have that included.
Would that be part of the warrant, though?
Part of the project, right. What's that? Through you, Madam Chair, sorry. So my understanding from our conversation with town council is they are project-specific special acts. So when we go forward at the special town meeting anticipated to take place in the fall, we would be seeking the authorization under the special act to ensure the ability to recover compensatory privilege fees from any developed property. But that would be at the time the project is brought forward, which will not be till the fall.
So it's okay to move this bylaw forward as is, and then work on the special legislation for that particular project at fall town meeting? Because it's going to take some time to get that through the process.
I guess, why wouldn't you put it all into one, one beat? I'm just trying to follow the law. I'm just trying to follow it, yeah.
Bylaws are, again, general bylaws. General bylaws are, generally speaking, when you have road improvements, when you have water improvements, when you have sewer improvements, this is the guideline of the platform that's going to be operated from. Special legislation, the only thing that's occurred to date is project-specific. So in order to alter your general bylaws, to treat specific projects differently, you need special legislation. So we wouldn't incorporate any language in a general bylaw to allow for that, and the legislature probably wouldn't go for it anyway. They're not going to give you carte blanche, they're not going to give you any special legislation unless they know what you're buying into or what the public's buying into. That's why we need to handle it as a special legislation specific to this project at the time when the project is approved. Again, as far as whether this by- legislation unless they know what you're buying into or what the public's buying into. That's why we need to handle it as a special legislation specific to this project at the time when the project is approved. Again, as far as whether this bylaw is ever implemented, will determine, will be determined by town meeting when they agree to put sewerage in the community. If we never have sewerage, I mean, we already have it on the books, that doesn't do us any good if we don't have sewerage, right?
Right.
So, as we go forward to town meeting and get the project, specific project approved, we then seek special legislation in order to assess differently so that it's more fair and, as Mr. Presley pointed out, and as you pointed out. So that's why it has to be project-specific as opposed to include it into a general bylaw.
I would just ask then that, you know, at the town meeting, that this town meeting that's coming up, that this, this extra information be forthcoming to people, because I think people are going to be wondering what, I think at some point you're going to be asked a question, you might as well add an extra slide or two to explain how that works out and what the future would look like to get ahead of the curve, because I think someone's going to be, I think we are concerned about that, right?
But again, but even, you know, and again, everybody sitting here is concerned about the single-family home dweller, you know, who again is not generating any income off of their home.
Yeah.
But again, once this project is approved, you know, the value of their property is enhanced for a couple of reasons. One, from a Title V standpoint, environmental standpoint, but also from an economic standpoint in relation to where they're situated and what can be done.
Right.
And again, if town meeting decides to rezone, and again, many of these single-family homes, not necessarily North Street, but 28, are already in a general business-
Yeah.
District.
Right.
They're already commercially zoned.
Right.
So that, once sewerage comes by their door, the value of that home is significantly enhanced, and therefore the abatement is justified. Then again, whether they decide to stay there or move on, it's a choice they get to make.
Yeah.
Same thing as far as tying in. But, you know, for the people on North Street, and part of Park Street, and Conkers Street, again, right now, it's currently zoned, just single-family homes, yeah, they, they, we want to make sure that they're treated fairly in relation to the value and enhancement of this project, in the entire project, in relation to the entire project.
Yeah.
So, we're cognizant of it, that's going to require special legislation to allow us to address that, and it's our intention to move forward with that, and I think it's a good suggestion that we would ensure that that would be discussed.
And to prevent a windfall for the, again, it's the landowners, not the people who own the building, not necessarily the people who are in it for commercial.
Right.
We don't want to have a windfall go the other way, so, you know, explanation about that as well. I mean, there can be a windfall, but let's, let's capture it.
But what we're anticipating, but again, what everybody is anticipating when this project is approved, is that there would be an economic opportunity for, not just the landowners, the property owners here, but for the town as a whole, because again, as the value of those properties go up, the share, tax revenue generated by them is going to be a greater share than on the, you know, instead of being, you know, 8% to 10% commercial industrial, where the single residential homes are bearing the burden, the bulk of the burden, it's going to be shared more with the commercial industrial. So the, the economic development potential is much more significant when this project is approved, and again, as those property owners decide to develop, we want to be able to assess them differently.
Yeah, absolutely.
Based upon, and that's what the special legislation will do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any more questions? I know I have more questions about this.
Thank you.
So, again, just getting back to the way this is presented in the warrant article, I understand that you have to strike through some text, I just don't understand why, I'm really not understanding why 25-2 is there still even after you explained it to me. If you didn't make any changes to it, I don't understand, it's very confusing to me. And I understand the, the forethought of putting this on the warrant article for vote, but how many, how many commercial parcels and how many residential parcels are along this, this routing that is going to be, is going to have the sewer running?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers with me tonight, but it's substantially more commercial industrial than it is residential. Depending on how you really look at it, I guess, there's some large parcels, the condo parcels, certainly if you look at that as individual ownership, then, then I think there's significant number of residential property being impacted.
So, well, that's, I mean, part of, I, I'm trying to understand this now, and I don't understand the reference, and again, as a layperson, to how it's going to be assessed. And I've heard three or four different things, even though it's tied into the statute. So, that might be something that more needs to be fleshed out, because I, I don't understand here, it seems like it's up in the air how it's going to be decided, who's going to be assessed and how, and now I would assume, just given what you just said about the condominiums, for example, there's complexes with multiple condominiums, and I would have assumed that the, the trust is going to get an assessment, but based on what you said, each individual condominium owner is going to get assessed, right?
Correct.
So those would be what separate residential units that you're comping into this?
Correct, they have separate tax bills.
Tax bills, yeah. So, and then the other, so I would want to know how many are impacted, and before we get a runaway train that's going to charge more for a business than, you know, a residential parcel, which I think is completely unfair, because we're waiting on a feasibility study that we saw in one of the, you know, the timelines to see the return on investment here, and the whole purpose of us, or one of the whole purposes of, in addition to obviously the health benefits to it, is to encourage some economic growth. So, we're already assuming now we're going to start charging a higher assessment, I mean, we don't even, it's, it's, it's really up in the air, and I think it, some more concrete example or discussion or explanation is kind of important. It's something you know in this field, but it's something, as I read this as a layperson, and as I assume other town voters are going to read it, they're not going to know what that means, uniform unit method. I don't, I still don't understand it, and it seems like there's a lot of leeway in determining that, that you sound like you have.
There, there is leeway in determining unit methods, you know, uniform unit methods, but it's not wildly, you know, different from community to community when they look at, you know, water or sewer usage as the basis for assessments, because obviously that's, that's what we're, that's the commodity here, right?
Okay.
So, so whether it's, you know, actual water usage, or something that's a designed flow from Title V codes, you know, and the, and statute allows for assessments of the highest and best use according to the current zoning. So I can see three different ways, and in fact, we are looking at three different methods, if you will, of looking at the assessments based on those characters. Actual water use, current Title V use, waterfall, and then what it would be for total build-out or potential build-out, you know, based on the size of the property and what the building area could be on that. But that isn't something that is recommended by KP Law to put into a bylaw?
No, I understand that.
Bylaws, the framework-
But this is for our information.
Oh, sure, and I'm-
So, that's why I'm asking this, because this is the first time we've seen it. We have some beautifully built, brand-new buildings there that maybe using, the storage is an example, it maybe uses no, hardly any water, maybe just the manager using the bathroom a few times a day.
Exactly.
Right? And that's probably not going to change its use until maybe decades down the line, right?
That's correct.
But, but what it sounds to me like you are saying is, those might just get assessed for their highest and best use, even though they, they already have a, they've already developed it to a specific use, that's not going to matter. So that's why-
That's what we're doing it, correct.
Okay.
And the other is based on its actual, you know, actual use.
But who actually decides that?
I think ultimately it would be the sewer commissioners, which would be you.
Okay, and then, then the first paragraph takes the provision, and then we would decide that, and then it goes to the town for a vote of approval. That's what it says here.
Well, no, it says that town meeting can, can step in and decide a different percentage for a specific project, you know, and whether that's, you know, pretty much the same, same project we're talking about here, the one and only project perhaps. You can decide a percentage, and perhaps town meeting steps in and says, we want a different percentage. So, so as commissioners, the language is there for you to decide, but they, but it's also there for town meeting to decide.
Okay, so the way that it's written as projects, it doesn't just mean this one project, it means future projects?
They could, they could step in on some future project as well and make a decision on it.
Like running it down a road, Mill Street or not a road or something like, running it down there would be a separate project?
A separate project, they would have a separate opportunity to choose some of the percentages later.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other, are we all, any other, Mr. Studo?
I would make a, like, just a comment that I think, like, speaking of the storage facility, which obvious, right? I mean, from some of the meetings I've been involved for that specific, at CPC as liaison, I can tell you that, in my opinion, just, it seems like there's already some changes the gentleman wanted to make. I, I just think that whatever the future use can be that sewer opens up, I'm going to find it very hard to believe that something as mundane like that storage unit will stay a storage unit. Again, I'm just making an observation based on what I've heard from multiple business owners just doing regular things at CPC, so you learn a lot, and it's just like, I've definitely heard of things where apprehension of plans has been more septic-related. So I just, you know, just something to say that we do have to find that happy medium, but I do think that there, I mean, a smart business person is going to see the value of their property and try to maximize it within the guidelines of the town. I mean, I don't think anyone, I, I don't want to pick on that, but in general, throughout that-
No, I know, but they've already done that at this point.
But I'm just saying that, like, if tomorrow for, I mean, I didn't know, for example, that some of these single families are on, already zoned commercial, but I can tell you that if I owned a single family, you know, maybe on Main Street, and I could theoretically sell it for somebody who wants to develop and go buy a single family in another part of town, or even like, in a, in a more quiet road and cash out or do something with it, I just think that we should at least look at what that would look like, because I, I feel like most people like to take advantage of economic opportunity if they can. There's those that never will, right? I mean, there's, not, I don't want to generalize, but again, I, I feel like, I just wanted to say that there should be in the future, because it's going to get decided, that's how we, like, there should be a happy medium, you know what I mean? It shouldn't be all or nothing.
Right, right. Yeah, I agree, I agree. I think it needs to be not just a guesswork, and I, where are we at with that feasibility study too, because I think that would tend to demonstrate the importance of this, especially if we're doing the bylaw.
So, as I presented at the, the last time we looked at water sewer updates, it was a June presentation for the sewer assessments, the POP 1, if you will, the financial piece of it, and the, the second, the market analysis, you know, would be in the summertime. So, so we're coming upon the first part, you know, talking about, you know, the calculation of sewer units, looking at the methods of assess, of determining sewer units, whether it be actual water use, or, you know, Title V to current use, or Title V to some highest and best use of zoning. So, that's coming up.
I think what was there was a, how we're going to pay for it, right? This is a component of, or one piece of how we're going to-
So, yeah, so that's, that's, you know, POP 1, if you will, POP 1A, you know, there is a component of, you know, the, the cost of the project, the abriments that will be generated based on the various, you know, assessments, assuming, you know, you choose 100% of the assessment, 100% of the project to be assessed, then that goes into the equation and, and you will have a better assessment. That cash flow over, say, the maximum 30 years, and all the other, you know, maybe grant opportunities you can consider, like the sale of land funds, to offset any kind of cost of the project as well. So, so that will all be before you as far as the financing of the project.
But are you working with the, the individuals who are the experts that are preparing the feasibility study? Because I would assume this component came up, and so you'd have factored in how many commercial, how many residential-
That's correct, we've been-
And this analysis, it might generate this, and that analysis might, I mean, I'm assuming this is part of that, so we would want to know, I think those, this is all part of a whole, you know?
Yes, I'm in close, keeping close discussions with them, as well as others, within different departments, the assessors, the finance, planning. So we, we have update check-in meetings, and we talk about specific parts of the scope of their work, and, you know, give them additional information or some guidance. Like today, I had discussion with the bylaws that were, we have here, and modifying what they've been working on as far as their spreadsheet to calculate better, and so that it sort of relates to the different ways that we could break down the costs and assess the costs. The methods, as we talked about, the three different ones that we're looking at, they're, they're working on that in their spreadsheet. So, all that will be brought back in a presentation for some more detailed discussions, and that's ready to go.
You mean before the June meeting, before the June town meeting?
Uh, well, that is-
We don't have a lot of time before then, and I would think this would get some pretty-
I mean, it doesn't have to be before the June town meeting, I mean, because those are the details of betterment assessments that will come later, but it can. I mean, we were shooting for a June one, but I think it's up to you whether you want to put that on the agenda or not.
Well, this is just a warrant, I think we're, we're sponsoring it, and so I think we really need some more directed, I, I do, but I'm only one out of five people, so I could be completely off-base with it, but I, I think we need some more concrete.
You want to have a better understanding of the details before this town meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, how many houses is this going to hit for a assessment? How many commercial property? How many pieces of vacant land that are undeveloped there are going to get hit, and how are you going to calculate those? They're not using any water, other than the water that's on the lot, so, absolutely, I would think that's really formulating, that's the data that is being incorporated into the, I'm assuming, the feasibility study, so that, where that's been in progress now for a while.
They, they have all that information, a parcel-by-parcel listing, that would be impacted by the project. And, you know, its current use, all the information that is provided out of the assessor's database for each property. So, so, yeah, that's easily, you know, shared and tallied.
Okay. I think we would, we should, we should have some more sense of it too, especially because, like I said, we're the sponsor of this, just seeing this now, taking a vote on the warrant. Mr. O'Leary?
I think we have to keep the issues separate. What we're-
It doesn't sound like that, though.
No, 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 let me just, what we're trying to do here right now is amend the bylaw, so that whether it be the project that we're proposing, going to be proposing this fall, or one, three years from now, 10 years from now, or 30 years from now, the way that it's going to be handled by the sewer commission, which is basically the board of selectmen, all right, allows for requisite flexibility rather than the rigidity of the current bylaw. In my 49 years of, having been elected, public official here, this is the closest we have ever come to bringing a legitimate sewer project to town meeting for consideration. So now it becomes more realistic as to what do we have in place from a general bylaw standpoint? Doesn't work. It doesn't work well for the community as a whole. We came to the conclusion that it doesn't. It's too rigid. We may end up at a 50-50, but we may end up 60-40, maybe 20-80, who knows what we're going to end up with, depending upon project-specific cost.
What do we get for funding, in other words?
So, so what I'm saying is, I think right now, we just need to focus on, does the bylaw need amending to be adjusted, not just for this fall, but from looking forward? Because I'm hopeful that this project that we're proposing here is going to, we're going to have all the answers to the questions that people have, and it'll be satisfactory to enough of them that the project prevails and it goes through. But even if it doesn't, this bylaw needs to be addressed, and this, again, from a timing standpoint, puts the project in the forefront, because it's starting to come to fruition here, and you're going to have something to talk about. But give us the tools to implement it, meaning the, the select board, when it comes through. So it's, it's two separate issues in relation to the specifics. I understand how it gets, it's easily confused, but I think it's important for us to say, we're putting this forth so that if this comes to fruition and town meeting decides to act favorably on this this fall, we have a mechanism in place- we have a mechanism in place to make the appropriate determination to be fair to everybody. Right now, we don't have that. And that's all we're asking for. As far as the specifics, you know, I, I think, I, I don't want a financial presentation to this board to be too premature because it would just lead to more questions than giving you the requisite information to make an informed decision. So, I don't know. I, I think, you know, pushing for June 1st for this feasibility study to be presented to this board is a little too soon, you know? I, my feeling being a little bit close to it here. It wasn't my intention or expectation to have that connected necessarily to this bylaw. The bylaw needs to be adjusted and needs to be tweaked, and that's what we're proposing now. The specifics of the project, the financial feasibility of it, the potential future impact of it, that's for, in June, this is for the June, July, August, September, October, and then town meeting will vote. But we need to adjust the mechanism by which we can assess because then that will allow us to make a determination to inform the public in October saying, this is how we're planning on doing it.
Hey, I have a question though, Mr. O'Leary, because again, I'm trying to understand the language as it's written.
I get it.
So I, I understand, instead of it being the town pays up to 50%, et cetera, that first paragraph doesn't refer to how the process is in private assessment. So I don't understand why that's in there. But then, that first paragraph refers to the last paragraph that's in there or the last section that's in there, which also, under 25-4A1, says the sewer commissioners can determine the percentage, let's say, up to 100. But do you understand as I'm reading it that, except for certain projects which are undefined in this, that goes to a town vote? Because that's how it reads.
What, what?
So, so it ultimately town decides.
I understand, but what, really what's being proposed is the sewer commission, which is the select board, you know, can establish up to 100%. But they can also determine, have their discussion, and they can determine that they wanna bring it to town meeting for ratification. Or, again, sewer commissioners make a determination and someone in the public says, that's not fair, that's not right, I'm gonna put it in a citizen petition and town meeting's gonna either bless what you did or change it. So there's, you know, there's really three different methodologies that's allowed for in the proposed thing. Sewer commission makes a determination, done. Sewer commission determines that they wanna bring it to town meeting, do that. Or sewer commission makes a determination and town meeting says, we're gonna take a look at this and we're gonna either ratify what you did or change it. And town meeting would have the ultimate authority if it goes that route.
Okay, I don't read it that way, so that's why I had so many questions.
Nope, that's good, it's good you have the questions, so we'll get it clarified and, and speak with town council to see if there's a better way of, working with it within the four corners must be presented.
Okay.
Which I'm sure it would be, allowed.
All right, so. Any other questions? Mr.?
Yeah, it's just a timing, it's, for me, it's kind of a timing thing. Like, just by introducing this, it's going to raise this very question as we've asked. And so, I understand where you're going, I understand you're gonna put in some extra levels of protection and stuff, but I think what people are gonna hear is, you know, if I live on the street, I'm gonna be impacted a huge amount and they're gonna be very upset not knowing the particulars. And until we have the particulars, you can't really answer the question. So I'm wondering if we're just, you know, if you're kinda setting yourself up for failure. If, unless you tell me that it has to be done now because that's the timing of everything else that lines up and we should probably express that, but without the extra information of I'm the person who lives on that street and I'm living in a private residence, I'm giving, they're not giving me enough answers to the bylaws.
The, the, the.
For me, it's a timing issue.
Yeah, no, I, if we don't amend this bylaw, then the only thing that we can do is tell people that the town is gonna absorb 50% of the cost.
No, no, I'm not saying we don't, I'm not saying we don't do that, I'm just saying, when, when do you change the bylaw? Do you change it now?
Well, we can't, we can't do the finances, we can't do the financial aspects of it, you know, unless we have the flexibility within the bylaw to do it. Otherwise, we're locked into the bylaw right now. So, you know, we could talk, wish women a maybe, you know, and hope that, you know, come next October, when we, along with the whole project, the whole assessment stuff and everything else will not have been determined yet, you know? Or then we're gonna get into, well, no, it should be 60-40, it should be, you know, 80-20, it should be this. We're gonna be presenting a project with a, with a split cost assessment at the special town meeting in the fall. We can't do that if the bylaw is in place. And then you're gonna be debating the merits of 60-20, 80-40, you know? Whereas we will have been able to make a determination based upon all the information we have to say, this is the project and this is what it's gonna cost you based upon where you live, you know? And yet, the people who will live along the, the route, they, part of what this bylaw does, again, part of the reason I would like to see it now, is it, it just brings it all to the forefront, raises all the questions, gives us three months to answer those questions and either satisfactorily or unsatisfactorily, depending upon where you're sitting on the issue, but it brings it to the forefront. And again, I think we will, we should be able to, at town meeting, say, listen, this is a separate issue. This will be a direct impact on the project that's gonna be proposed. But if we don't enact this, we can't tweak it. We can't be more fair to the residential dwellers over here if we don't have that flexibility. So we're looking for the flexibility for this project specific, you know, in the fall, but for future ones also and for future expansion, if we go into other neighborhoods. Again, we have additional capacity here that we're looking to build in so that in another generation, future town meetings can determine to expand and we can treat people fairly, as opposed to cut and dry, this is how it is. So, again, it just, yes, it brings up, brings us to the forefront, it does raise questions, and that's good. To me, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good, you know, and if we can get people to understand, you know, what we're proposing here is, yes, we want you to be aware of what's gonna be proposed to you this fall, but in order to give us the necessary tools to adjust it appropriately, we need this fixed.
So, again, I'll say, what's out of slide that expresses that upfront? So that way, people understand how this fits into the public way.
But we do, yeah, but we do want people to, to be engaged. We want to engage as many people as we can.
Just, I, I understand what you're saying, you can change this bylaw, but if you don't have the sewer, it doesn't make any difference anyways, right? So you're trying to, like, match up the return on investment feasibility study with the flexibility so that by the time you get to October or the special meeting, you're able to say, this is what we can do. But without that, you don't know what you can do.
No, we know, we know we can't do it.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, if you can express that upfront, that would help people understand how this fits in. You know, so that's what I'm suggesting, is just add that on to it and that would give people at least a reason, rationale about why it needs to come up now and not later.
Yeah, it is a timing thing, based on what Mr. O'Leary's saying.
It's a timing thing.
Are you all set, Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm, I'm just agreeing with, if we're going to vote this forward, that you do need to have more information, have these questions answered for town meeting, be able to show it to everybody.
Okay, good, any other, Mr. up or out?
Just a clarifying question, is it the board's preference to have that more detailed presentation from the consultant take place on June 1st or are we, do we not wish to do so?
I mean, I mean, it just, I understand now from Mr. O'Leary's explanation, and I think we all do, the timing aspect of it. And I think this is one mechanism of being able to afford it, even though all the specifics aren't ironed, or at least it opens up the leeway to do that. I think it's important to give some type of thing that explains how many parcels are, there are and how many parcels are, you know, gonna be assessed and how many parcels. I think that's, that's just basics, we should know that by now. I mean, we've been working on this for years.
Maybe, I think maybe we should do two things.
Let me just, Mr. Studo, was it Mr. Studo that had his hand raised? Let me just speak to Mr., let Mr. Studo, whatever your comment is, because he's really quiet tonight, so let's give him a chance now. Mr. Studo.
Well, I've been talking all day, so I have a line, I'm quiet. So, to answer it, I mean, if you meant by the June 1st for the ROI report, the feasibility study?
Yeah, that won't be done until, no.
That I know, yeah, okay, so we're, I, I think I wanna say that maybe to Mr. Walner's point, maybe with the presentation, a clarifying statement on some of these points. Like, to preempt that, you know, it's something where, I, I feel like, to me, if I was looking at this from town meeting, it's just, it's a general change of a bylaw for present and future products, uh, projects. So I feel like just making that clear will, I mean, but that's what, however the wording, I know Madam Chair you'd agree how the wording, but like, that's really, but that's really what it is, but also making it very clear that all that's being approved is the change of a, a process, like a changing of what the process or what the select board could theoretically do and then what the town could do as well. Nothing, nothing else is happening, so I just, I just don't want it to turn into this thing that like, by doing this, then this happens, because nothing really happens.
That's a great point, and I missed it, that, that's a great point. And if I'm here reading this and I'm on that line, or I'm on that potential line, I'm reading this saying, oh my God, I'm gonna pay 100% of this $110 million project. There's no way I can afford to read that.
But that's not what we're saying.
That's not what we're saying, but that's what I'm telling you. A person is gonna look at that, or a property owner's gonna look at that who's on that line. So I think the more of what Mr. O'Leary is explaining, this is just one piece of the ability to determine pay because we are looking into other payment options. But I think that's how someone's gonna read that. They're gonna say, I'm on the line, it's saying, now they're gonna be able to assess 100% of the cost to anybody that's on the line, that's me. That's how they're gonna read that. Not esoteric, they're changing a bylaw, we're putting a sewer line in. They're gonna know exactly that it's related to the putting in of the sewer line and the millions of dollars that's gonna cost. Mr. O'Leary.
I, I think.
Let's have you have the final say on this, okay?
Oh, I don't know, I don't need a final say, but I, you know, my suggestion is, is that the wastewater study committee and the team here should be making a presentation to the June town meeting in the form of a report anyway, which will give us, give the town meeting and the community a detailed understanding as to where we are in the process and where we anticipate being in the fall. But this is where we're, where we are. And as part of that process and that presentation, you're also gonna be presented with an article tonight for consideration, which is gonna, one small piece of the puzzle to allow us the flexibility to properly assess those that are right there, those are gonna be the users and future users, you know, as opposed to people on the other side of town who are not gonna get any true betterment from this right off the bat. So, I, I think we can separate it, you know, if the wastewater, wastewater study committee goes and gives, gives a report, town meeting, and references the article that's in the warrant, and then when we get to the warrant article, say, yeah, as we spoke about, or this is what we're talking about. And I think that would help separate.
Does that answer, Mr. Gilbert, because you've heard, there's no way that we're gonna have that. We're all waiting for it, but that, that doesn't mean it shouldn't be intensely focused on so that we can get information sooner rather than later, so we can digest it ourselves too. But I think that's, is that the collective?
Yep.
Everybody shaking their head yes, so that's the plan. And then that, really that, that, if you look at that first paragraph, it's not saying what you're saying it means, so. It looks like we're gonna, as, not we, but the board of sewer commissioners is gonna decide a percentage provided that, which then means it has to go to town meeting for an approval. You're saying something different to how it's worded, so we want, we wanna make sure that's.
We will take a look at that and I'm sure the moderator will allow for a, a motion to be more clear that will be within the four corners of the article. We'll speak to town council about it and get it clarified.
Because we have to vote for this tonight, right? Mr. Gilbert, so that it goes out. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilbert.
Just one piece of information, there was a draft of this that was in the packet that identified the select board as a sponsor. I since corrected that in the version for the copy to be signed to reflect Department of Public Works as a sponsor. However, if the board wanted to take over sponsorship, I'm sure the department wouldn't object to it. And, so I just, I would point that out because I.
But I, why did you put that in the packet today?
Yeah, so later today, we corrected something in the version of it, sorry.
So that would be something we could just look at here and when we come to the meeting in paper, we're not gonna catch it if it's.
That's why I'm bringing it up, I know you wouldn't have caught it.
Does anybody, raise your hand, please, show of hands, if it matters to you who's sponsoring this? Select board, select board.
It matters to me.
Yes, Mr. O'Leary.
Either we own this or we don't, I'm not looking to.
Absolutely. I'm saying, because we're the sponsor, we have to know what it says and we're just seeing it for the first time, so. Select board, we're all in favor of being a sponsor, there's not, not, no offense to you.
He's happy to turn it over.
Yes, but that doesn't mean that we can't, we shouldn't have a succinct presentation of the information so that it's really clear what you've been working on because we know you've been pouring hours and hours and hours into this. We need some concrete information for town meeting for sure.
Thank you.
You're not off the hook in that one. Okay. That was, as Mrs. Gonzalez says, that was my mom voice, so I apologize. My mom tone, all right, so do we have a motion now? Thank you, by the way, for that, the presentation and the answers and all that. Oh, I'm looking at Mr. Studo, Mr. Walner, do we have a motion?
So, are we ready to do the town meeting warrant, is that the link discussion?
Oh, I, actually, do we wanna go through with regard, just to quick, quickly go through before we take a vote? I believe that this is everything that we've already reviewed the past few meetings and incorporates the fire chiefs. No, we're voting to sign this right now, then we'll do the review later. But I'm just asking the members.
I don't wanna add anything. But I'm not looking to do anything.
Is there anything, just in terms of prior to this vote, is there anything you have a question on? And, and Mr. Studo's, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a more detailed review of all the articles, but it'll already be voted if you have a question. It's already voted to send it to Warren, and we've actually already looked at all of these and had presentations, all, with the exception of this one, which we've been waiting on. Any other questions?
Yeah, there's only one, because on the first committee, I know we, we gave you some language, but I didn't see that in the packet today.
Article 27?
Yeah, and I gotta find it, but I didn't see the language.
The warrant article may be different than the motion.
Page 48, I mean, page.
It's page, page 40 of the packet.
But the warrant article may be different than the motion that we're looking for.
Well, I'm, so I, just, I don't know what the additional information is, I'm sorry.
So there's that one paragraph, I'm not looking at it right now, but the one paragraph was there that we added on last week, we added on additional details about that.
So, there's some language.
To be printed in the warrant, including a map.
So there'll be, so there will be a description that will go with the warrant and that language we will incorporate into the description, it doesn't go in this version. This version is posted by the constable at Ryers and at a number of other public spots.
All right, so it's gonna show up later.
It will, but it just, this is a version that is only posted publicly. The description, the maps, all of that goes in the, the version that's mailed to all the residents and that information will be in there, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I understand.
It does actually have the length, a little bit more in it than what, what was originally talked about. But so, did you read that paragraph and that's fine?
I did, but I was, there's things missing, so, yeah, but that's okay.
Well, the visual portions of it, but the trail improvements is in there and.
Maybe I saw the line, because I didn't see it.
Conceptual plans for trail improvements.
Trail system, swamp on course.
You gotta have an old packet or something, because I didn't see it.
conceptual plans for trail.
Right, all that, that we just talked about at the last meeting.
Yeah, I know, we talked about it, but we hadn't added it until last week, but, okay.
That looks to be everything that was in the press.
Didn't see it for some reason.
All right, so, any other questions? Are we good? Now, do we have a motion?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to sign the June 6, 2022 spring annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. Studo. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
There should be a version there to be signed for the constable, Mr. Lavlos here this evening.
Okay, all right, we can move on our next order of business. Is a Sunday entertainment license for ultra chic. Do we need Mr. Gilbert over here? One minute. You do need him.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Is that the warrant?
That's the corrected page.
Next order of business, Sunday entertainment license, ultra chic events LLC, doing business as ultra chic events at Hillview Country Club. And we have the licensee here. But Mr. Gilberto, is there, is this something that we just overlooked in terms of the application that we already approved?
Correct. Yes, Madam Chair.
And, and do we want to, do, do you want to give us a little quick, introduce yourselves and give us just a quick rundown of the entertainment that you're going to be offering there? You don't have to, one, two, one, two, three, letting us know.
Um, it's basically the same thing as.
Sorry, I'm sorry. And just state your name for the record. You're our licensee.
Yes. Javier Santos. Um, it's basically going to continue on. It's the same thing as a Saturday event. Be a wedding, birthday, just a regular celebration.
So music, bands, dancing.
Dancing, DJ.
DJ. All right. And any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to grant a Sunday entertainment license to Ultra Chic Events LLC, doing business as Ultra Chic Events at Hillview Country Club to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hanging in there.
Learning a lot more than you ever wanted to know.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amazingly boring.
Yeah. All right. Next order of business is to receive the recommendation of the capital improvement planning committee in a vote to approve physically a 2023 capital improvement plan to be submitted to spring annual town meeting. Welcome, Mr. Kalner.
Thank you.
Take it away.
I think you have.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. You haven't finished signing the warrant, so the constable could.
It's been passed the law, I think.
We're almost there.
The warrant. Yep, there we go.
Mr. Sudo, did you already sign it?
Yeah.
Is it, no, you can't hear?
I thought maybe somebody might want to hear me too. Maybe I should turn around the other way.
We do.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The capital improvement planning committee, as I've stated in the memo attached to the recommendations, went through our normal process of meeting with department heads, looking at their recommendations, asking questions, getting more information. And then the individual members of the committee evaluated those recommendations and ranked them on a scale of zero to five, five being the most important. And then brought all of that together and got an overall average recommendation. So we put all of the projects in line, look at them, and see where they stood relative to each other. And so, and what the result of that is the, what we'll call the ranking sheet. It's more than that. If the ranking came out of this, and then we looked to see what we could afford. We received over $7.7 million in requests from the municipal departments and the school department. Hillview and Water Enterprise requested $400,000 and $2.4 million respectively. So we had a big number that we were considering. And I will go over the individual details of what projects we're recommending, which we're not recommending, and why in both cases. We ended up recommending on the municipal and school requests, almost $3.4 million of funding. And something different this year, we were the beneficiary of some grants from the state that were able to apply to some of the projects. So that we didn't have to depend on bonding and available cash that would come into the capital stabilization fund. Grants have gone well, amount of $523,000. And then go through, when we get into the individuals, we'll look at what we're doing with that money. We've borrowed $75,000 in free cash from the town. We had a one-time ability to apply some accumulated bond premiums that had been held by the town on previous bond issues that could be used to offset the cost of projects that had a length duration. And we elected, we're recommending electing to do that, so as to help fund some of the projects. We're recommending about $470,000 from the funds that are available to the stabilization fund, and then bonding about just under $1,006,000. We go, and then with respect to the, the two enterprise funds, as we generally do, our evaluation of those, we look at the projects first to see whether or not they make sense. And they typically do. And the enterprise funds only goes forward with the projects that they're, they're looking for if they can afford. That's probably particularly true of Hillview. They've got to have sufficient revenue to be able to, or debt capacity to do the projects they're doing. And the same is true of the Water Enterprises as well. We thought that the request that they made of the committee made sense, and that they had the ability to carry out those requests. So now I would go to, very briefly, I want to just thank the committee. There they are. This is a.
My name's Belgrado.
I'm sorry. I, that happens to me all the time.
Yeah, the "V" at the end.
I know. I know that. We'll fix that. But there, there is the committee, and we have a lot, a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions. And it's, it was a, it was a struggle trying to, trying to pull all of this together, meeting different times of the day, and we did get through the process. So I thank the committee. It's not a one-person operation. It's the folk you see up there. All right. Onto. Okay, good. So when I talked about what we had. Go slide up just a little bit below this, and get the total.
For the members, it's on page 43 of our packet.
Can you, can you, okay. So there's the $7 million, $7.7 million. That's the entire list of items that were requested. Let's start at the top. Column headings, other than descriptions of which are pretty obvious. The, the first dollar column there is the amount of the project that is being requested. The next column where it says grants, fees, grants, free cash, et cetera. That's funding that is not going to have to come out of bonding or out of the money that is made available to the, the stabilization fund. So an example of the wireless radios for the fire department, the state provided $75,000 in grant money. And we're recommending spending the other $39,000 to pay for that out of cash available through the program itself. The life pack, another fire department request that is being entirely paid by a grant from the state. The roadway rehabilitation reconstruction, the request this year was for $900,000. We're going to bond, recommending bonding $500,000, and $400,000 is going to be provided by free cash. The turf field is, is the one where we are using some of the bond premium. The total cost of that is $486,000. We got a grant from the state for $100,000, and we had another $356,000 in available bond premiums that we could apply to this, this 10-year project, which left us only $30,000 balance, which would be paid for out of the cash in the, in the plan. The park three brief design is the design project, is a $200,000 project. The state has given us a $100,000 grant. And the other $100,000, again, would be paid in cash. Where this is a design project rather than the construction itself, would have a maximum bonding of this of five years in any, any event. And we, we decided that it would make more sense to, just to pay for it when the project comes along for construction. And that may be next year, it may be further down the road, we're not sure. Then that would be bonded for a longer time. We had four requests for intersection improvements. The first one you see here is April Street and Chestnut. If you go down into the section where it's, they're not being recommended, there are three others. The second item under DPW, the first item under DPW Engineering, Central and North Street, then Central and Park, and a little further down, Park and Conker Street. These are all important safety issues in the town. When we looked at this as a single project to do it all in one year, it really was cost prohibitive because it would have just dwarfed everything else on here. We would have had to not do other important projects. So we talked to the DPW director about the possibility of breaking this into two pieces and doing what is deemed to be the most pressing intersection, April and Chestnut Street this year, and proposing that we do the other three next year. So there is a, there's a $580,000 price tag on, on the April and Chestnut Street project. There is grant money available, $100,000, which was given by the state, leaving us with a $480,000 item to be bonded. And we are going to be bonding that, or recommending bonding that for, I believe, 30 years. The upgrade to the library bathrooms, this has been kicked around for a couple of years, and what we needed to do. It's a $60,000 project. State gave us $40,000 for it, so it left only a $20,000 cash item to get this completed. The exterior of the library, we've been committed to doing this for the last several years and have been doing a piece of it, and it just keeps growing. As you would expect in a building of that age, the more you get into it and start doing the work, you find more things that need to be done. And so this is the, I believe, the further funding of this project over the last several years. This final $80,000 should get done, all of the exterior work that we have contractually been doing. And that would be a bonded item. The tech, instruct, instructional technology, this is for the schools. These are smart boards in life. These are not, not the one-on-one computers. These are, I believe, primarily in the elementary school, if I may be wrong in that, in that research. We're trying to provide some technology funding for both the school and the next item for the municipal government every, every year. Just to keep things fresh, not get out and get out of date. Make sure that the equipment that we're asking people to, to use is, is up to date as we can reasonably make it. So that's those two items, and they're, they would be paid for in cash because they're relatively short-lived, I suppose. The little school HVAC upgrade, phase two. These are rooftop units that are in need of repair. Their building is getting old. They've been taking very, very good care of it. We've made a lot of improvements to it over the past several years. This will provide better air in, in one wing of the school. We thought that that was important, particularly in the pandemic era that we're, we're living through, and probably going to do it in person sometime. Police department hot water heater replacement. This is an industrial type of heating, I'll say system. It's a tank with heat, heating system that will provide hot water to all of the, the water needs in the, in the station. The old tank system that they have needs to be replaced. There are sediments that is building in that and spreading through some of the pipes and causing some problems. So this needs to be upgraded. Town hall office split units. This is a heat in, an AC unit that will go into the buildings like behind us here. That is not in some of the, the parts of the building now that really, really need that, that upgrade. The highway department is, wants to replace a dump truck, a F-350 dump truck. 2007 highway department keeps their vehicles a long time. And when they need to be replaced, they need to be replaced. We try to be responsive to their requests so as to keep the fleet as, as up to date as possible. So 2007 to 2022 is a pretty, pretty good life for a piece of equipment like that. And so we're recommending that. The elementary rooftop units, I believe these are in the, could? I'm not sure, but it's similar to what we're doing for the little school. The electronic message boards, this is a request from fire department. We've got one message board now. It, it's, it's old. It needs, needs to be replaced. The fire chief has asked for two of them so that they can be located in different parts of the town, delivering messages that he's being done on a timely basis. $24,000, and that is a cash item. There may be some money coming from the state to help with this. We're not, we're not sure yet. But Representative Jones has, has applied for something, and it, it's got to get through the legislature to be approved. There may be an offset to this. The full-size pickup truck, this is replacing a Ford Explorer, a 2013 Ford Explorer that was in the DPW fleet. Obviously, you're not going to do any plowing with the Explorer. This would be a full-size pickup that would also be useful in plowing snow. And the, the last item in this grouping is, and something we started doing last year, is some sidewalk repair and tree removal. And there is a, as it was last year, a $75,000 request. And this is going to be, we're recommending funding this for free cash. On the right-hand side, the average column, that's the ranking. So this is a scale of zero to five. So as you can see, the very first, the fire department items ranked as five, down to four, seven, four, six, four, 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 minus zero, and so forth. The cutoff here came at about a three, and that is the sidewalk repair and tree removal. The next item down ranked significantly higher than a number of the items that are being recommended. And the only reason this is not being recommended now is we can't afford it. A million and a half dollar item with a 30-year life will, will have a debt service of over $100,000 here. I think the first year, this was like $117,000. That's more than, than the budget can accommodate. That's more than the budget can accommodate. It's important that it be done. We're deferring, we're not recommending, we're deferring it until October, and the hope is that in October, there may be some federal money, or that we will be able to use the Opera money to pay for this item. It's important to do, this would tie in the batch, the fire station, the police station, Jamon Tavern, the library, I think that may be all. About the building is on?
Thirty, the third unit, yes.
As well, into the wastewater treatment plant at the middle school, high school. There is capacity in that plant. We would like to do it. It would be an aid certainly in any other work that is done downtown, any work that is done on the fire station, for example. It frees up space that is currently being used for leaching fields, and we wouldn't have to worry about that. And it will save us from replacing septic systems as they age and perhaps fail, before they fail. So, this is important. If we could have squeezed another, you know, $100-plus thousand dollars, the debt services would have been on the recommended list, but we couldn't, and there isn't. Going down, just to look at the other items on the not recommended.
Mr. Kellner, just on that one there?
Yeah.
Have we approached the state in relation to PBD Court also tying in? Because they may be willing to share in some of the costs. Their septic is actually over by the baseball field. It's across the street on the baseball.
Apparently, it's septic now, Steve, right?
What's that?
It's apparently new septic. That was probably 15 years ago at the most.
Maybe 15 years, but what's it, a 25-year lifespan on the system? And if you're going to be going right up the driveway?
I think, I think it was talked about, and one of the things, and it may be something in the future, but there will be a higher demand for wastewater from that property than, other than the batch, from any of the others we're looking at.
Right.
And we know there is capacity in the high school, middle school wastewater treatment plant for the properties that we described. Until it's running for a while, we're not sure, or at least that was the word we got from DPW, that there would be enough capacity to take on the elderly housing project as well. And it gets a little complicated because it's state-owned versus town-owned. We'd have to have some sort of an arrangement with them, but, you know, we talked about, that would be a good way of helping to pay for it, but we don't want to overtax the system. We'd rather bring in the pieces that we are proposing now. And down the road, if there is additional capacity, or is needed additional capacity, that could be certainly brought up and discussed. Mike, you want?
I think there's, I believe there's 40 units there. That's it. There's 40 units, mostly single people, elderly people, living there, and go right by the front door. And they're going to come knocking on our door, probably in 15 years anyway, or 10 years from now, looking to tie in, because otherwise, they're going to have to replace that system. They've already done it, let's see, once, and they did it once, and they've also repaired it. So, since 1960, it's been done twice. So, that's 60 years.
I think it would make sense to do it if we know that we can handle it at the.
Well, you're more familiar than I am as far as the capacity of that treatment plant is pretty good.
Yeah, it is.
And what we're using for the schools is.
Well, but there's one more school we would be going into, the batch would be going into.
No, I understand, right.
So, that's going to be part of, that will be the heaviest user of all of the ones we've talked about.
Right.
I mean, you're not going to get much out of the other buildings, really.
Right. But 40 units, 40 people, you know. Anyway.
Do you have a comment on that, Mike?
Ms. Phil Fairough.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. You know, it is something we talked about, and I know there was some concern with regard to DEP and their review process for this, but we certainly want, I think, to partner with the housing authority. That was the concept at the time. We started talking about this in 2014, whenever it was. So, I will ask the public works director and the town engineer to, you know, reapproach DEP to see about that possibility, and also engage in conversation further with the operators of the plant, the public schools.
And we should be able to figure out exactly what their current water usage is also, pretty easily.
So, I think, Madam Chair, through you, I think that this, that's an opportunity to defray cost or to cover additional cost if there is anything associated with it, but I don't think it necessarily impacts our ability to go forward with this project when we go.
No, other than it's a, well, if you go to October town meeting, legislative session ends in July, so if there's going to be money available, it's now, you know, but anyway. Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Phil Fairough.
So, I just to follow up on that. We have provided, you know, the project amongst a list of many projects to the legislative delegation and to our congressional delegation, and I know one of the senators' offices was interested in the project as a potential funding source. So, hopefully, we may get something.
No, I'm just saying from an appropriation standpoint, budgetary standpoint, or even special legislation, to allow them to have them kick in, not just as a grant, but to be a user for that particular PP Court, so.
We can follow up on that.
I think if we're going to do that, we have to determine, and we already know that there's some increased cost of the maintenance that's absorbed by the school system, and just to add our own town buildings on to that, there is going to be some, you know, we're going to have to figure out the maintenance of that, the increased cost it will be to the town to cover that, because obviously, if we're sharing that facility with the school, then we're going to share the obligation to address the increase, increase to use. So, I think that would need to be determined first before we decide we're going to add on extra buildings and properties to it as well, unless.
They're going to kick in the help.
They're going to kick in the hole.
Oh, the hole, or even a portion of it for maintaining it going forward too. I mean, they're going to be users also.
Yeah, it would have to be of some benefit to us to add even more buildings on that we'd be responsible for maintaining, you know. We'd have to really know the, know what that potential maintenance cost is going to be, because it's automatically going to increase with each different parcel being added to it, so. We know the schools had increased costs associated with that as it currently operates, and it was anticipated to operate, so. Mr. Kellner, do you have anything else? Thank you.
The rest of the list here in the not recommended, there are items that have been on there for a while. The central street sidewalk is a big one, and that's one piece, that's about half of the sidewalk. The other half is probably at least $800,000, maybe a million dollars, so that's a big item. The DPW would have liked a new bucket truck, you know, and I think that'll come back up again next year. I talked about the intersection designs and construction, right? The design has been done. And the others are relatively, except for the Route 28 design, $800,000. The others are relatively small, and I'm sure we'll be back up next year, and in all likelihood, it'd be recommended for inclusion next year. We had to draw the line someplace, so when we looked at the cash, that was looking at the capital stabilization, stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, trying to maintain a balance in that of some reasonable amount of money. There's about $900, less than a million dollars in there now. It gets replenished with free cash in the fall. We apply some of that to the projects, trying to keep that at somewhere not above a half a million dollars, just as a buffer, and we're able to do it in this program. The items that we're bonding, as I said, we're bonding a couple for 30 years, and most for 10 years, and there's, I believe, a 15-year item in there as well. And we've increased the cost of those bonds to 5%. Trying to reflect what Bond Council has been telling us this past year about where interest rates are going, so, and that's about doubling the interest rate we were using last year and the year before. So, we've kept the debt service at the prescribed limit. It was increased this year from $1,001,000 to $1,250,000, I believe. Next year, it is proposed to go to $1,300,000, and then it goes to $1,350,000 thereafter. And so, all of the modeling that we've done was with that as a parameter that we couldn't bust through the allowable debt service that's being paid for in the operating budget. What we recommend doing is using the stabilization fund each year to the extent we need to buy down that debt service and to hold it at that level. We're able to do that out through the projection period, which is 2030, that's as far as this projection goes. It'll get updated again next year with the new items and rock full out another year, but that's been our mandate, is to hold the debt service at the limit that is being funded in the operating budget, and so we're able to do that with the projects that we're recommending.
Can I just have a question on, what's the Route 28 project?
Sorry?
The Route 28 project, what is?
Well, that was, if we wanted to do the design of the roadway and have, to be able to control what was happening to the roadway when the state comes along to do whatever they're going to do with the road. The $25, the $800,000 represents 25% of the design, so the whole thing would be $3.2 million or thereabouts. And this was the first piece of it. The alternative, as I understand it, is to let the state do the design and hope we can influence their design by telling them what we would like to see, on how we'd like to see the road designed. The only way to have complete control over the design of the road, and the residents know more about this than I do, is for us to do the design ourselves with no reimbursement from the state for that design. When we looked at this, we said, the likely, many of us thought, the likelihood of the state acting on Route 28 in the next year is probably pretty small. And this wasn't an item that we thought needed to be dealt with this year. I think the bigger question is, can we influence the design that the state comes up with on the road without paying for it? I don't know the answer. I think there is some, certainly some significant sentiment that we can't, that the state would just go and do what they want to do, and we would wish we had had more influence over it. I hope that the state would pay a little bit more attention to the municipalities there. They're putting, rehabbing roads in to get some input from that municipality on what the thing would look like, but it's not something I could indicate to feel in all of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Mrs. Gonzalez? When I gave my suggestions on here, I just wanted to know that I gave fives to all of the intersections that we did the studies on. Personally, I feel like it's a safety issue, and I just hate to see them put off. I know it got discussed when I wasn't in a meeting, and just personally for me, I feel that it should be, they should all be done this year. I just, I don't like putting off something that's such a big safety issue that we know bad accidents happen at, and I'd hate to see something happen before we get to that, something really bad. I just wanted to make that comment. Mr. Wallner.
I'm choking on one number, and that's that turf field, $486,000. And, you know, I'm not a football player, I'm not a lacrosse player, I'm not a soccer player or anything else like that, but I run around the field, and I don't see the wearing tear.
It's in the center.
It's in the center?
It's not.
Can you, can somebody explain to me what the justification is for that compared to the other priorities that are up there?
Again, this really is a safety issue, and we've been told by the people that come out to inspect the field, or Pox and Rec has been told, we have been told, Pox and Rec has been told, that there is wear on it, there is, there are some spots in the middle of this that are, could be, could be dangerous or will be at some point in time. The, it has, the field that that turf cover is, I guess, more than 10 years old now, and it has kind of reached its useful life, and we're trying to be responsive to Pox and Rec in that, they brought this up last year to do, and we kind of said, go back and take a real hard look at it. I think this is a liability issue, that if we're told that it is got to a dangerous point, or it could be approaching a dangerous point, that we really should do something about it, because a lot, a lot of people on that field, not just kids, but a lot of people on that field, and if it, you know, we move the town to make sure that it is, as you would say with the intersections, that we take care of safety first. Would I like to spend a half million dollars on the turf field? Absolutely not.
Yeah.
But it's something we have to do. It's not, it's not, it's not just adding some nice.
No, I understand it. I just needed to hear. It's just disappointing that a turf field only lasts 10 years. It's like basically a $50,000 year lease.
Well, the covering, the covering is what we're talking about, and then some of the materials underneath it need some rework, but the carpet itself has got that kind of life. What we're proposing here is bonding, no, we're not bonding, I take it back, we're going to bond it, we're going to hold it to a 10-year bond.
I think that we've talked about going forward, knowing that this is going to have to be done again eventually, you know, preparing for that in the future, which we didn't do.
I'm sorry, I missed something.
Going forward, because it's going to, it's going to have to be done again. It has to be kept up.
Yeah.
So, going forward, hopefully.
Pox and Rec, so it's going to be here towards the availability. I also think there have been repairs over the last year or so, so we can extend the And we also looked at other ways to pay for it. There was, there is some state money for that, nearly enough, needless to say, because it doesn't cover the whole thing.
In fairness to Pox and Rec, it's not just Pox and Rec. I mean, it is a school property. It was used primarily by the schools, not by Pox and Rec. Pox and Rec kind of has some use of it, but to look to Pox and Rec to pay for it, I don't think that would be a reasonable thing to do. I mean, the primary user of that field is the school system.
I mean, I just like, I don't know who's saying that there's a liability. I understand that has to be rehab for concussion purposes, but that's no different than any other field in the town. But to say, you know, we're going to be liable if someone gets a concussion, I mean, you can get a concussion anywhere. You can get injured anywhere when you're playing sports or using a recreational field. I feel like that, maybe there's other options that we should look into. We have. We, we have, we laid out a turf field, so now we're stuck with the maintenance of a turf field and all the undergirding of that turf field, which is why this is such a cost, costly endeavor to keep up. And I agree with you, ten years seems hardly worth it. Put plants of grassy and make sure we take care of grass instead of having to, and it's the same risk of concussion on the street, the sidewalk, the, the grass field, the turf field. Supposed to be a better system, I understand that, and it's a beautiful, beautiful park, but it's, it's really, it's really expensive. It's, I, I, I wanted to ask you about these tee boxes. What's a tee box and why are they under it? I'm, I can't get over those things. A cart path, isn't that just a dirt path that you drive the car along? What, what, don't they already have cart paths here? The tee boxes, I don't understand what, is that a box that you put the little?
No.
What is it? I mean, that's, I'm having, I'm trying to absorb those, those budget items.
People always want to talk about this.
Because I think some of that, some of that funding maybe could have generated to pay for, you know, some of the funding in, in that enterprise. And I know we've discussed this at our strategic plan, but some of that could have maybe paid for some traffic calming or improvements on North Street right down the road. But what is a tee box?
Tee box is where you, you, you drive the ball from. So having.
It's a golf thing.
There's gotta, there's gotta be golfers in here. But if you, if you don't have a golf course that's got, got good usable facilities, you're not going to bring the redwood.
Yes.
People aren't going to play golf.
I understand.
The tee box is where you get up and you, you.
That's where you set your tee in the ground and then you ask, put your ball on it and you tee off.
Okay. How about the bunkers? What's a bunker?
Bunkers are the, the.
Sand traps.
Sand traps.
I mean, that seems so expensive for a tee box and that isn't even an artificial term. That's just grass.
You have eighteen holes.
There are eighteen holes.
You know, that might, that might do, sorry, two, three.
Yes, all right. But, but I agree with what Mrs. Gonzalez said. Arguably, every single one of these is a safety thing, but we do know from paying for studies that we really wanted to effectuate those traffic calming measures and address those situations. I rank those very high as well. And that's because we, we have the study now, we need to move forward with it. And I agree also with what you said, Mr. Kelleher, because you, this is so well laid out with which departments are, and a lot, but a lot of the, the DPW ones are really, you know, a variety. But that school department is also really should be the one for the turf field because they're, they are the primary user of that turf field too.
But they don't own it.
The Hillview owns it, right? We keep hearing this.
Out of the custody and control of the recreation.
But the school uses it almost.
Right.
Absolutely. They have first priority.
Right. Which is, which is as it, as should be. And I also understand, as we discussed at length at strategic planning, that from the Hillview Enterprise put up the funds to, I guess, rehab that in the first place. Now we have to maintain it. So, that is a, a big, big chunk of change that could have gone to a whole host of other safety measures, but.
And again, I'll assume some responsibility because I've been sitting here a while. We should have been planning for this over the last ten to fifteen years and we didn't. So.
And that's what I'm saying. If going forward, we should be.
Better policies in place to be able to cover that somehow instead of it being a massive hit like that. Although, you know, maybe we're going to have to absorb even more.
Well, it's a major facility that the town utilizes.
Yes.
And to a certain degree raises revenue from.
Right.
You know, but primarily it's, it's, it's school use and, and town use. So, you know, we should plan like any other investment, any other piece of property we have. We're going to have to invest, we know we're going to have to invest in this every ten to fifteen years and we should just plan on it.
Right. Maybe that revenue goes right in to a fund.
Well, no, the revenue again, it's generated through Parks and Recreation, but again, they have other programs which are certainly, uh, don't raise the revenue to support the programming and the programming. Again, we're already supplementing the Recreation Department too because it's not self-sustaining.
Does not seem like a whole heck of a lot of money all told for things, but I know that the expenditure is, we're cautious about that. We're cautious about the way that we're spending funds. So, I appreciate the way this is laid out to see how many other, you know, sources that, that you're getting, utilizing for the payment of a lot of these things. Does anybody else have any questions or comment or?
I just, I, I would like to also say that, I mean, the way you put this out is very user-friendly to read and I understand that for sure, for sure.
Do we have a motion?
We have to approve it, yes. Do we have a motion?
We do.
Mr. Wallner?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, the FY twenty-two and three capital expenditures is recommended by the Capital Improvement Plan Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Pretty animus. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher.
Thank you for the usual, again, in your committee, the painstaking, the painstaking process that you go through.
My name was spelled a bit wrong, probably a third of the time.
Half the time, yeah.
I'm not alone.
It's E instead of I.
It's all fixed.
One L instead of two. All right. Our next order of business is to review and discuss the town administrator's fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-three departmental budget recommendations.
Revenue expense plan.
I already checked that off, yes.
They already checked it off?
I'm moving right along. I'm sorry, this is our next order of business. I was trying to get to that eight fifteen meeting, that, that, that public hearing. I'm sorry. And Ms. Broar, review the updated fiscal year twenty-two and three revenue and expense plan. Jump ahead.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, may, you know, the, uh, chair and former vice chair, um, you know, reviewed this revenue plan at our last financial planning meeting, I want to say, was.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah, probably two weeks ago. Um, and I'll just go quickly through it to review some of the, the changes that have come about, very minor. Um, so, on this front page, which is the taxes and state aid section of the revenue plan, you will see that chapter seventy, as well as charter school reimbursements and library, um, offset receipts, those have been updated figures according to the house budget. And, um, there is also an offset in the expenses, um, for the public library's offset receipts. So we'll see that in a few, a few slides down. Under local receipts, since the last time we reviewed the revenue plan, there have been no changes. Um, so those stay as, as they are. And now we move forward with the expense, uh, section of the revenue plan. And highlighted in yellow under the FY twenty-three projected budget, you can see the state and county charges, um, decreased to a hundred and sixty-six thousand and eighteen dollars. And as I mentioned, the charity sheet offsets, um, one is listed in revenue under state aid and one comes off as basically a charge. No other changes have been made to this. I will just note that, um, the PFA health insurance contingency, as well as the school health insurance and municipal health insurance budget numbers, uh, reflect the seven and a half, uh, percent increase as discussed at, um, the previous board meeting. Moving on down to the budget distribution section, um, so, uh, in a few slides, um, when we get to the budget hearing, um, you will see a pie chart of, of the breakdown between fixed costs, municipal costs, and then school department costs, um, with the percentage allocations. Um, so total municipal allocation is about thirty-three point eleven percent and total, uh, school allocation of revenue is sixty-six, uh, point eighty-nine percent. Uh, but you will see that, uh, later on in the, the presentation. Um, one other item I will note, uh, that has been adjusted since our financial planning meeting and it was discussed at financial planning is, uh, with the trash program, as we all know, we've been talking about trash for quite a few months. We have our trash fee and then we have the new program of pay as you throw, uh, trash, where you will go and purchase rolls of trash bags for your trash overflow. And so we are only projecting five thousand dollars for FY twenty-three and the reason for that is, you know, um, the bags are going to take three months, um, to be produced and so we're, we need to really see how, um, at least nine months plays out for, for the first year. Uh, so we did have forty thousand dollars in there at the last financial planning team meeting, um, but we've since adjusted that, especially after finding out that production of the trash bags will take about three months. Um, so moving down to total municipal revenue available, you can see, um, there's eighteen million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and, um, the total municipal operating budget is, did I say seventeen million? I'm sorry, eighteen million, seven ninety. Um, and the total municipal operating budget is nineteen million, one thirty-eight, two ninety-one. So we have total municipal revenue available and then we have an added funding source of free cash, um, which is three hundred and forty-seven, uh, thousand, five twelve. And in that number is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twelve for, for, um, firefighter recruit training costs and also fifty-two thousand, two hundred for DPW small capital that you saw in the Saturday budget presentation by DPW in various divisions. Um, so that gives us total revenue, nineteen million, one thirty-eight, two ninety-one and total municipal operating budget is nineteen million, one thirty-eight, two ninety-one. Down to the school allocation, um, you can see that total school revenue available is thirty-five million, four seventy-four, three thirty. Um, they have a total operating budget of thirty-five million, seven oh nine, three thirty and they have an additional funding source of one-time items to be funded with free cash of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And I failed to mention when I discussed the municipal free cash, um, allocation, those are one-time items. So that is what I have under revenue then.
Questions? Any questions, Mr. O'Leary?
Just on the, um, PFA health insurance contingency, um, you're carrying seven and a half percent, which is what we've been carrying for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And that represents what, about seventy-five thousand bucks? Seventy-five thousand dollars more than, it's seven and a half percent of what?
So the PFA contingency, so it's PFA, what we have to pay for, um, the PFA, um, which is broken out on a sheet and I could pull that up, um, as well. But it's also a contingency for, um, any, um, changes if there's, uh, you know, refactoring new hires within the municipal and the school allocations of health insurance. But this is for if, um, if, you know, uh, someone gets married, a life, a life-changing event, so if someone gets married, they come out of the health insurance, you know, we already had the employee, but now we have in addition to the family plan. Um, so it gives us a little buffer. Um, but I'll let the town administrator speak to the, the PFA, tell her.
Mr. Calverno?
Is the question relative to the breakdown, Mr. O'Leary, or?
So, so we have in here a million fifty-five, is, is that, that's what you're setting aside? No. No.
That, so that's only the portion of the health insurance cost related to the PFA?
Is that what the net PFA contingency is going to end up at with the seven and a half percent?
No, so, um.
Well, it went from, you know, nine eighty-one to a million fifty-five, so it's seventy-some odd thousand dollars increase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Based upon the premium, is that recovering or you just went up by seven and a half percent?
So.
Mr. Calverno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, so there, there are three components of health insurance that are now in the expenditure plan, as you see there. One is the PFA, one is municipal health insurance, and then the final is school health insurance.
Right.
And rather than apply varying percentages according to, for example, the premium we saw from Blue Cross, which was a different premium than what we actually are going to experience. We've applied the seven and a half percent across the board in the three categories.
And so that PFA number, Mr. O'Leary, um, we, we have to pay RSI who is.
Right, kind of Isaiah.
Yep. And so that's what they project for, you know, it's basically that we have to pay them for the claims that they pay out. So this is not our surplus that we plan on receiving, this is for the claims that they plan on paying out.
And you've increased that number by seven and a half percent over last year? I'm just trying to.
Yes, correct.
And then you're projecting moving forward at eight and a half, correct?
Moving forward, eight point five, yes. So for FY twenty-four, we have a projection number which you, you don't see here. We have a projection number of one million, one forty-four, eight fifty-two.
Actually, I see it here in our packet.
Okay, yeah. So for the presentation.
Got it right, yeah?
Yeah, so eight and a half for our future years. So, last year's number also had a contingency in it as well. So we take the number provided by RSI for, um, the projected claims and, um, they've already inflated that by, you know, the seven and a half percent or six and a half percent or five, whatever it turns out to be. And then we, um, have added contingency ourselves. So that rolls forward, you know, each year. So the nine hundred and eighty-one, five forty-seven from FY twenty-two just rolled forward at seven and a half percent.
Okay, so that's what, so you're working off the previous budget number in the PFA line, seven and a half percent, next to be eight and a half percent?
Mm-hmm. Yes, correct.
But if their fee changes, that'll change. What about?
Yes.
Yes.
For.
Because this is, this is anticipated claims plus their fee.
Correct, yes. And so for twenty-three, this is their, the projected figure that, you know, um, it, it's going to cover their fees, the claims that they pay out and, um, a little buffer that we have in there. So, and then going forward, if, uh, their fee increases for twenty-four, that number will be adjusted, um, as well as the eight and a half percent plus the buffer.
Yes. Good, thank you.
We, we were always carrying it at seven and a half percent though.
For FY twenty-three, yes.
Before that though.
For future years.
Previous year.
Previous years.
Yes, yes.
We always had to plug that amount in except for maybe one, one or two of the very, very early.
They were lower, yes.
Years where we did four and five, I guess.
Yes.
So, but we increased that to seven and a half, but we know that's not, that isn't.
That it's going to be adequate.
That's not going to be good practice.
No.
Because it's not going to cover.
Right.
What we even know, the basic increases that we see in the premium every year.
Correct.
So we have to work on a plan to absorb that in the, in what we have and make sure we keep, continue to make it more realistic to what we're seeing.
Yes.
On average for, for the premium increase. But I think the first step was a little eight, eight and a half.
Right, I think we need to move forward, you know, and incrementally figure out a game plan for that of how we should increase it. So, um, you know, that probably is the topic that we should discuss, uh, you know, with financial planning as soon, as soon as possible.
All right. Any other questions? All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay. The next order of business, you're here for the next thing, right?
I'm not finished with revenue plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought it was. Everything is all in one. So, we have, we have the revenue plan, we have the departmental budget request summary, and then we have the budget hearing, so we'll just keep on going.
Just before we get to the budget here, I have to read the, the main.
Yes, yep. Is this okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, as we just saw, thirty-five million, seven oh nine, three hundred and thirty dollars is available for school department operations. The school committee approved the, the school department's operating budget on May second. And as mentioned previously, two hundred and thirty-five thousand was identified in one-time expenses and will be funded with free cash, which still makes the school department's FY twenty-three operating budget thirty-five million, seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Available funds for municipal department operations, nineteen million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Total municipal department budget request, nineteen million, two hundred and ninety thousand and thirty-two dollars. And as you saw on the previous slide, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars is one-time costs to be funded with free cash. Now, you see here a budget gap of one fifty-one, seven forty-one, and you're probably all saying, hmm, well, she just told us on the previous slide that the budget was balanced and there is no, no gap. So, you will see on a further slide what comprises of that, because the departmental budget request for nineteen million, two ninety, thirty-two dollars, but the town administrator's recommended departmental budgets is nineteen million, one thirty-eight, two ninety-one. So, we will, we will identify the one fifty-one, seven forty-one. Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the departmental budget recommendations. Do you want to do this?
No, you go ahead. You're doing great.
No, I haven't.
You run a roll.
I don't want to take, I don't want to take, you know, the thunder. Okay, so FY twenty-three departmental budget request recommendations. So, we have within the FY twenty-two budget, the creation or the adoption, which is in our charter, the public service director position. And in FY twenty-two, that's not budgeted as a full hundred thousand, because the physician did not, you know, begin in July of FY twenty-two. We are still in the process of interviewing for the public service director position. That should be wrapped up this week. We are deferring the new library and youth services positions. The library position is a programmer outreach, outreach position, and then the assistant youth services part-time position. Until the public services director position is filled, those two positions will be held in the salary pool for FY twenty-three. They total seventy-eight thousand. The youth services part-time assistant position is twenty-five thousand, and the library position is fifty-three thousand. We had a modified FY twenty-three library budget request of seven thousand dollars to fund tuition reimbursement for a library technician. It is part of their CBA agreement that they can receive tuition reimbursement. And so, this, this will be funded under departmental budget request. We are going to reclassify the project manager grant writer position that was going to be housed in the, under the town administrator's budget and was funded for FY twenty-two at seventy-five thousand dollars. That position will now be moved to the finance division as a grant writer position.
Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just kind of to give you some of the background, a lot of what you see in bullets, in bullet two is tied to the process that we're in for bullet one. You know, we're still going through that process of identifying a candidate for the public service director position. You know, I'm optimistic that we will wrap that process up over the course of the next week or so. And from there, we'll take that person's feedback with regard to the proposals for new positions within two of the departments that will fall under the public services division, and look to their, for their voice with regard to how we fill those positions, whether we fill them in the same form, whether we fill them in a different form. But we're recommending we reserve the funding for those in the salary pool, so that we have that option available to us over the course of the beginning of this upcoming fiscal year. The tuition reimbursement request came in from the library with regard to library personnel. As the finance director mentioned, this is a benefit that's provided for under the collective bargaining agreement, but it is subject to appropriation, which means that it's only provided if the town appropriates the funding. And there is a so-called clawback provision in place with regard to that as well, in the event the employee leaves the service of the town. And the final thing is, you know, we've had a lot of conversation with regard to the very important position of the grant writer. We've advertised for the position, did not get an overwhelming response in terms of the candidates coming in, spoken with the finance director, and our feeling is that we still proceed with the position as purely a grant writer position to go after those funds, and that we locate it within the finance director's office for, not only for oversight, but also because of the reporting that goes in hand-in-hand with what the finance department does.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
My initial reaction, just in relation to the grant position, grant, grant writer position, and it's going to be in its infancy stages, I would, and again, I know he's ultimately responsible for it, but I would still prefer to have it in the town administrator's office. You can decide anybody you want to come report to them, but to me, this is going to be a new position, we're expecting a lot out of the individual, and I, I just think this should, it almost should be a direct report, but, because, I mean, the other one is going to be ultimately held responsible for what's happening, what's not happening, or if something's happening and all the rest, as of now. And again, as it evolves, then maybe you transfer it, but as you recall, we were talking about potentially assistant town administrator's position, and we said, you know, this is probably more appropriate.
Right now.
Yeah, right now. So, to me, it's just, I want the ownership to be where I'm going to hold the person responsible for it, not the finance director, town administrator, personally. Either way, I'm going to hold her responsible for it, so.
But to me, I think it's. We need this position filled.
We need it filled, and I think.
Three years ago.
Right.
Three, a while ago. Mr. O'Leary, you want to say?
Just my comment.
I thought that we had discussed that the new position, that would be a requirement, and they'd be a grant writer. Did I misunderstand that?
I don't, I don't think so, but I don't, I don't know what the reclassify means, so that was going to be my question, because project manager is an entirely different title than grant writer. So, is that what, is that what you mean, you, we, we were talking about a grant writer?
Yeah, but I, I don't know, I thought maybe in strategic planning, when we were talking about the public service director position, that that would incorporate the grant writing as part of that position.
Those are two separate.
They are, they were.
Two separate?
Yeah, because we talked about clearly a public service director working with all the human services divisions, which, most of which municipalities are funded under grants, senior, you know, senior centers.
Right.
You know, veterans and things like that. So, that individual would obviously have to have some, you know, grant, grant, grant writing capability. But this is a standalone position, so, I don't know, is it, was there something with the way that it was advertised as a project manager, Mr. Gilberto, that that's why it didn't draw around? Because that's something totally, I think it gives off a separate message altogether than a grant writer, but if you don't mind explaining that to them.
I don't mind at all. Madam Chair, it was advertised as a combined project manager grant position. That's how it was proposed in the budget initially, three years ago, and then cut, and then re-proposed to get proposed again for the current fiscal year. The bottom line is, you're right. Feedback we got back from the finance committee as well was, it's just very different skill sets that we're looking for. So, the proposal is to go forward purely as a grant writer position and advertise in that fashion. I think we'll get a much better response.
You should almost say, even though this is not, you probably can't do this financially, but you get your, you know, percentage of whatever grants you bring in.
Commission-based?
That's what they do in the private sector, but, you know, I know that we could, maybe you could tie a bonus to the revenue, you know, grant revenue generated, but just a thought.
We could look at that, Madam Chair, thank you.
We're giving Ms. Rourke, you know, nervous breakdown. It's probably inappropriate under municipal finance law, but anyway, something, something created to get some other incentive in there. Although I do think north writing is an amazing place to work with amazing benefits offered, so we'll just add that little plug in there. All right, is there any, are there any other questions about this? And are we done with the recommendations, or do you have another slide? Any other questions? All right, okay.
As many of us heard during the Saturday budget hearing for the fire department, chief stats discussed the day officer position. This position has been brought forward for a few years. First, I believe it was, you know, titled fire prevention officer, day officer, you know. So, this position with potential changes to staffing, the staffing model in the near future, we are going to hold this position in the salary pool, similar to the youth services part-time assistant director, and the library program manager outreach, you know, coordinator. So, this is, you know, we're not saying no to this, it's just we're going to hold it in the salary pool.
Well, we haven't said yes to it either, right?
No, right. I mean, so, but this is, this is a departmental budget recommendation. The next item.
That's your deficit right there. That's your hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar deficit. Go ahead, Ms. Rourke.
The next item is to fund the requested part-time per diem building inspector, inspection, health services position of twenty thousand dollars. This position existed not on a per diem basis, but it was a part-time position, and we did have this position even when we hired our full-time assistant building inspector. So, we are now reinstating this position. We received a departmental budget request from the Board of Health for a full-time Title V inspection services position at sixty thousand dollars. This was a secondary budget request from the Board of Health. The first budget request from the Board of Health was requesting contracted services for Title V inspection services at an amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred. We have had further discussion, and twenty-five thousand is what we are proposing in addition for contracted services. We also had a departmental budget request from the human resources department to increase the benefits coordinator position from thirty hours to thirty-five hours. That position had been at thirty-five hours several years back, it dropped down to thirty. We're asking to increase it, or the human resources department is asking to increase it five more hours a week for a total of ten thousand, four sixty-eight. We are deferring the funding for two tree positions within the Department of Public Works until, until it comes back around in FY twenty-four, and that is a total of a hundred and nine thousand and forty-one dollars. And so, as mentioned, we are funding with free cash, training for four fire department recruits at two ninety-five, three twelve, and DPW's small capital at fifty-two, two hundred. Just want to bring us back up to defer funding for the two tree positions that have been requested by the Department of Public Works for one oh nine, a thousand. And also, I want to bring us back to modify the Board of Health's request. So, the difference with the Board of Health's request and the two tree positions brings us back to the total budget gap of one fifty-one, seven forty-one. So, the town administrator's departmental budget recommendations, total nineteen million, one hundred and thirty-one, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Is Rourke, is that by not approving a sixty thousand dollar tree? No.
The Board of Health position for sixty thousand.
This year, and then the other two?
Two tree positions, yes, yep. So, we have a balanced budget with the town administrator's departmental budget request.
Okay, questions? I know that's great. I can't imagine there's any questions with the ending with, we have a balanced budget, but, oh, we got one. Questions? Okay, Mrs. Earlbert.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Earlbert?
To you, the town administrator, is the training for fire department recruits normally paid with free cash?
Madam Chair, through you.
Oh, Mr. Gilberto.
I think it was to me, did I hear you right? So, depending upon the year, Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Earlbert, we have a potentially unique situation upcoming with four potential retirements happening at the same point in time, and the finance director and I, we discussed this, and recognizing the unique situation that that presents, felt that this was an appropriate use of free cash. Further bolstered by the fact, the fact that, as I think some of you saw in your emails, we had a very healthy free cash certification coming from the Department of Revenue on Thursday of last week at over five million dollars. So, I think we felt that at this stage of the budget process, based on the unique number of positions coming up at the same time, it was the right, the right move.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
That's Mr. O'Leary.
Same line of question here, Mrs. Earlbert. I don't, I don't recall funding salaries with free cash, first of all. Packing up, back up a couple of slides, one or two slides here. So, this, what was the hundred and, name's the next lineup?
Down, the other way.
Down. Oh, so that, deferring a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to the salary pool, which what the request was. So, you're still allocating the money, the hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, you're just putting it in the salary pool. And that's to cover, again, what? Just to have it?
It's to cover the fire department's day officer requested position within their departmental budget request presented to us in, in March. And I will defer to the town administrator to explain the thought process with this.
Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, thank you. We know that we have seen this request over the past couple of years and have not, not been prepared to proceed with it. I think what's given me, even though we may have the financial capability to potentially fund it, we also have a recently settled collective bargaining agreement that has within it potential avenues to modify staffing in the department. And I think that anything we do with this one position needs to be done in the context of the rest of those staffing discussions, and I clearly have not had those discussions at this point in time.
No. My thought process too, in that this did not, I do not necessarily see this fitting into the equation in the upcoming fiscal year necessarily. So, I mean, so if that's the case, you know, you're funding $295,000 or whatever it is for free cash, I guess I don't see the merits of allocating $164,000, $165,000 into a salary pool when you're also supplementing the salary pool with $295,000 and just tying it into some of these other requests. Obviously, I've been spending a considerable amount of time referring with the Board of Health and their requests, and it doesn't appear as though their workload is necessarily going to be diminishing over the next several months either, going into the next fiscal year. I mean, the pandemic is like, well, it's fluctuating a bit. It's not going away, and, you know, we're going to have to be able to react to whatever's going to occur. And they're talking about another surge in the fall, in the winter, and, you know, we're going to have to be running clinics again, we're going to have to diverting the attention of our Health Director on that and away from other, other responsibilities and duties that would normally, under normal circumstances, he would have been able to absorb. So, I don't know, I guess I'm questioning a bit, why couldn't you fund a $60,000 position, you know, take the additional funds there, put less in the salary pool, and meet the needs, identifiable needs that we have already responsibility for? Same with the Board of Health. I think we can meet the requested needs, and again, the Board of Health, over the years, has been pretty conservative in their, in their budget requests and what they've been looking for over the years, have been operating pretty efficiently. And the regular, normal responsibilities, whether it be inspections for, you know, Title V, or whether it be inspection of restaurants, that hasn't diminished, that hasn't gone away. But the responsibilities of this agency or this department have taken on exponential responsibilities. And again, I don't see it going away for the next year. Again, we can modify this next year, you know, for the 2024 budget, but for 2023, their needs are considerable. And socking away $164,000 for a position that we're probably not going to fill in the salary pool and not meeting those identifiable needs, I think is maybe not right.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I don't recall, excuse me, but as far as the Building Department, that's what they requested, the 20,000?
I believe so.
But I just don't see the responsibilities and the workload of the Health Department diminishing at all. And the need is there. Again, it doesn't have to be, you know, forever and a day. It's, let's address the needs as they're presented to us and fund it, and then, we've done it in the past. We've hired consultants, or we've had other personnel on, and we've then reduced, reduced the personnel, and when the workload diminished. We've done the same thing in the Building Department.
They are, they are funding the need by giving the $25,000 in contractual services.
They're requesting.
We don't need a, we don't need a full-time Title V Inspector in the department.
Nope.
No. And they, they don't even.
We can't, we can't meet the requests on a timely basis for people to transaction, their real estate transactions. It's been a constant criticism, you know, and the people that we have right now, their attention is being diverted to other things, like a pandemic.
Everybody's attention's been to a pandemic.
I understand, but we're talking about the Board of Health here. They have specific responsibilities for, you know.
That's right.
Restaurants, and Title V, and all the rest.
That's right.
And that's under normal circumstances.
But I, I don't, I think we would need to see the data to suggest that a full-time position is necessary.
Let's get back to the $164,000 that's been allocated for a salary pool for a position that we're probably not going to fill this year. And yet, we're not, we can't see our way clear to meet something that's right in front of us, or needs that are right in front of us. I don't get it.
I don't know that there's a, a need for a full-time, another full-time position in that department for that service.
So, we're going to set aside $164,000 for a full-time position that we're not going to fund, that we're not, that we're going to fund, but we're not going to fill?
I'm not, I'm not necessarily negating your argument on that strategy, but I don't think that it should go to the Board of Health for a Title V Inspector.
Or the other place that was.
But, but Mrs., Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, you're saying that there's going to be another surge, we're going to need more clinics. I don't see that. It's going to be like it was, maybe some boosters. It's not going to be like it was when everybody had to get vaccinated. Everybody's vaccinated, they might need booster. I don't see that it's going to be the same scenario.
It's not going to be the same when nobody was vaccinated.
Right.
I'll grant you that, but the boosters wear off, the things wear off, and you're going to have the same people that were already, got the shot? Needed again. But again, and I think the state has learned a lot, and I think a lot more is going to be pushed down to the local level because it's going to be handled there more easily now than it was before. And I think they have more confidence in the, in the more local or regional settings rather than sending people to Gillette Stadium.
The argument would have been better made if that was some sort of a COVID-19 position or pandemic position, but.
No, you have your health director that's handling that. He's the one that's certified, he's the one that has the credentials. This is specific to meet the needs that are ongoing all the time, 52 weeks out of the year.
Okay, but prior to COVID, the Health Director already contracted out for, for that work, so.
Or the previous one.
It's not as suddenly that that work became more unbearable.
The previous Health Director had contracted out for the restaurant inspectional services because his specialty was Title V.
Well, that's what the $25,000 in additional contracted services is for.
Again, I, I don't understand the merits of the $164,000 going into a salary pool as presented.
I totally agree with the point that you go fund some of the re-crews.
And I don't agree with, with funding salaries out of free cash, and I don't believe we're appropriately addressing needs that are right in front of us. Other than that, it's fine.
All right, any other questions? All set. Mr. Walner.
Just a quick question. I'm still kind of stuck on the training for four fire department recruits is $295,000. What is, what is that? I mean, literally, we're spending $80,000 per person to train them?
They're paying the salary instead of the income.
Ms. Rourke.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, it's, it's a combination. We have to backfill for those, those positions. We have potential for retirements within the Fire Department, so there would be backfilling so that these individuals could, you know, train, and we would be having to fill with overtime. And it's also outfitting the new, the new recruits. I also want to just note that we did fund recruit training within the Fire Department or within the salary pool last year with free cash, as it is not, you know, typically a reoccurring cost to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just with regard to the deferring of the Fire Department day officer position, I'm not certain that the right move is to fill that position in the Fire Department, but what I did see here in my conversations with the Finance Director and the Fire Chief, there's a, this is funding that could also address some of the staffing discussions that we've had and things that tie back to the collective bargaining agreement for which we really have not had ample time to prepare for and implement based upon the timeline. So, my hope is that it gives us an opportunity to consider those options and reserves that funding for that purpose, doesn't obligate us to do anything in that particular department at this point in time, but it does give us, give us the opportunity to evaluate what makes the most sense based on the recent collective bargaining agreement. So, that was my feeling on that. With regard to the other item of the Board of Health, I believe the Board of Health's initial submission to us called for a request for $17,000 in contracted services after, I think it was a Board of Health meeting in November where this became a pretty contentious discussion. I had asked them, you know, give me what the request would be if we were a standalone full-time person. They then followed up with that request. Not recommending going forward with that standalone full-time person, but I am recommending giving more in contracted services than was originally requested to make sure we can cover, cover that need for the upcoming fiscal year.
Questions? All set? Okay. Okay. Was that all, Ms. Rourke?
Yes, now we're at the public.
Okay, let me just, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the, unless there's anything else, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, we did provide the Clerk a motion that would, would finalize the budget with the fixed costs, school committee, municipal, and what am I missing?
Well, shouldn't we do that after the informational hearing?
We don't traditionally, but we certainly could.
All right, we'll do it your way. Okay, Mr. Walner.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend the fiscal year 2023 operating budget in the following amounts as proposed by the Town Administrator. Municipal fiscal year 23 budget, $19,138,291. Schools, FY '23 budget, $35,709,330. Fiscal year 23 fixed cost, $23,209,712.57. And for a total budget of $78,57,333.57.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
I will be supporting the motion. I may not agree with all of the allocations, but I believe that the process works.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Also, to thank the School Department because through these financial planning team meetings, they really did go back and scrub the budget for cuts that they could make or consideration of one-time funds. And as we went through, as Ms. Gonzalez and I attended those, we, you know, we learned that a lot of their attention had been diverted due to extraneous issues that were occurring, not the least of which were multiple repetitive public records requests that was taking their time and attention off of these really important things like budget, not the public records aren't important, but the budget and getting this ready on a timely basis was important too. So, so we do want to thank them for the school, the school department, the school committee, Michael Connolly, Dr. Daley, and just going back and really looking at, looking at this and fine tuning it so that we could come into balance with both the municipal and the school department budgets. All right, so next order of business is the actual hearing. Town of North Reading, notice of fiscal, fiscal year 2023 budget informational hearing. North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the Town of North Reading that an in-person and virtual informational hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Town of North Reading anticipated to be considered at the spring annual town meeting on Monday, June 6, 2022, will be held on Monday, May 9, 2022, 8:15 p.m., Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, and via Zoom technology. And the hearing notification and publication notices the access information to join the Zoom meeting with the meeting ID, the one-tab mobile numbers, and the dial-by-your location. So, we'll open the budget informational hearing. Mr. Gilberto, any comment, or Ms. Rourke, any comment?
Madam Chair, we have a brief presentation we can go through for the benefit of the public. It will re.
Please.
It will review most of what we've already discussed, but.
I will, I will go first.
Please do.
Just to, you know, echo your sentiments, Madam Chair, you know, the Town Administrator and myself, you know, we continue our budget collaboration between the town or municipal and school leaders through the financial planning team, which consists of Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations, Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Science Committee, and the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee. So, we, I know that since I started 10 and a half years ago, I started my first day with a financial planning team meeting, and it is a useful tool for all of us because it brings us all together, gets us all on the same page, and, you know, there's, we all work together to make sure that the needs of both the municipal side and the school side, you know, somehow we can fill those budget gaps and shortfalls that we see early on and work together with, coming in with balanced budgets. We continue to maintain and hope to continue to maintain an affordable health plan. You know, as we discussed going forward, we need to come up with, you know, maybe even a policy of how we, we budget for it in future fiscal years, but we have taken a step for that for the next few, few years out, so we will continue to work on that. You know, and as mentioned during the signing of the dance and the bonds, we want to maintain and continue to build critical reserves. So, you know, the General Stabilization Fund, the Debt Capital Stabilization Fund, you know, the PFA Stabilization Fund, and any new reserve funds that, that we may create and fund. And we continue to dedicate budgeted funding to OPEB annually, and with our actuarial study that we have for FY '24, we will incrementally be increasing that figure up as well that is funded by raising appropriately. Just quickly, as you saw, fixed costs, municipal and school, this is the whole pie. I hope those presentations are right, because my, at this late hour, it might not be, but actually, nope, just don't catch, we won't look at that slide. We can look at this slide. So, 6689, as I mentioned, is the division of revenue that we saw on the revenue plan, and 33.11 is the division of revenue for the municipal side as we saw on the revenue Key expenditure drivers within the FY '23 operating budget, and, you know, there are key expenditure drivers that seem to be repeated over several of the past years. Count insurance, of course, is a big one. Regional school assessment, we, you know, will continue to be seeing this grow, and for the reason that Northeast Technical School is having a new building project, so this does include approximately a little under $50,000 for their debt service, and that number will continue for '24, but in years out, that number dramatically increases, so you will see this as a key expenditure driver going forward. County retirement assessment, this is going to be one until the pension is fully funded in 2034, I believe. And general liability insurance, you know, one that increases incrementally. It's about 5.3% increase over last year, however, we have some rebates that we can take that bring it down to the 3% that we budgeted. And Medicare, of course, as, you know, personnel costs increase. And Medicare, of course, as, you know, personnel costs increase, Medicare costs will increase. Current cash reserves, as many of you saw, the free cash that was certified was 5.2 million. The stabilization fund, which is a critical reserve fund, a reserve that we have on the books, is close to 3.8 billion. And then we have the capital improvement stabilization fund. That will have a deposit and a withdrawal at June town meeting, and it's 958,000. Water infrastructure stabilization fund, 2,751. Solid waste stabilization fund, 166,000. Water retained earnings came in at 287,000, and cell tower revenue has a current balance of 673,000. And these are all figures before we even get to the town meeting, you know, appropriations from them. So the recommended budgets, as you just voted with your, the budget motion. Can I see the Town Administrator vigorously looking, so I hope they're right. But we did, we know that the municipal and school side is correct, and then fixed costs and fixed costs include health insurance workers comp, Medicare, debt service, which we just, you know, as you're signed, finalized those debt service figures, regional school assessments, state and county charges, and encompasses quite a broad range of expenses that we share with the municipal and the school side. So we have a total of $78,57,333.57.
Do we have, we do have to open it up to members of the public? If there are any questions? Is there anyone in attendance? Anyone in attendance that would like to ask any questions? Hearing none, seeing none online. We'll close the, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Roark. All right. We can move on to the next order of business, which is public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in public comment? Hearing none, seeing none, no, no hands raised. We'll move on to the next order of business, which is to review and discuss the June town meeting warrant articles and, was there any? Mr. Gilberto, there wasn't anyone?
There was none, no.
It's all just us, Mr. Gilberto.
At this stage, yes.
Yeah. All right. So we are review and discuss the town meeting warrant articles.
Right. Madam Chair, through you, as the Finance Director pulls up the presentation that we customarily go through, I have put in the packet the motions, and I put in bold the recommended course of action for each article from my standpoint to hopefully guide the discussion, but obviously, it's the Board's pleasure with regard to these recommendations. As I think everybody knows, we don't always make recommendations on every article at this stage. Sometimes we need to withhold a recommendation as we work through the process and offer recommendations closer to the town meeting. But whatever we do vote this evening will be put in the warrant, the version of the warrant that will be mailed to each household here in North Reading.
So Article 1, I imagine we're gonna wait till, we're gonna pass over this one, I mean, wait, make a recommendation at the?
Here it says recommend.
Yeah, we're gonna recommend.
We're gonna recommend budget amendments?
Madam Chair, through you, we have one, there's one budget amendment that we are anticipating.
That's unusual, isn't it?
It is. We normally do it right up at the town meeting, but.
That's what I thought.
At this stage, we know there will be at least one for the pay-as-you-throw-bags. The recommended funding source is the stabilization fund for solid waste. We were gonna be proposing a transfer into the sanitation budget for FY '22 from the solid waste stabilization fund.
Any amount of?
Forty, excuse me, $50,000.
And are there any other potential?
No transfers that we know of at this time, Madam Chair. No other transfers.
But you are recommending that we just recommend?
Recommend, yes.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 1, fiscal year 2022 budget amendment.
That's different.
Recommended town meeting or recommend?
Recommended town meeting.
That's what I thought.
But you're gonna recommend.
That's what it says in bold.
My recommendation is to recommend. It may say recommend a town meeting, but my recommendation is to recommend.
I thought I was reading which one I was reading.
No, you may be, but the recommendation is to recommend.
Let me start again. Madam Chair, I vote to recommend.
Right.
Article 1, fiscal year 2022 budget amendment.
Okay. Second.
I told you, we're mud after 10, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I am advised that our audio has quit, and I can see that the lights are off, so if you would just wouldn't mind while I stand up and dial us back in.
Gotta do it. I'll watch you. Sorry. That green light isn't on, right?
This one's on.
This one's on. Oh, we're in.
Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready. No. Since we have a break. Rooms are locked. It's great. Come on. It's good. I hope you're ready.
Some of it really has to do with what they do with their free cash. Some communities do not spend free cash and have other stabilizations, such as rebuilding and stuff. So it's very hard to look at it from that standpoint. I think that it's hard to keep up because the stabilization fund obviously is affected by cost increases, et cetera. And the, the kinds of needs that this would pay for are pretty incomprehensible in a way. It might have paid for some of the COVID stuff if the federal government hadn't come around, but it's, it's, it's a rainy day fund in a very restrictive way, and then it's really for a bad rainy day, not just, oh, well. So, and the other interesting thing, by the way, is that I have not been able to find when the stabilization fund was started.
Can that be in our annual reports? Why don't we ask the town?
I don't know. I've talked to Karen, you know, this, that, the other thing. The only thing I have not done is go through, um, the files in Article 5, mostly because buildings are tricky because of COVID, and I haven't had a chance to do that, to see if it's some of the old minutes, that information exists. Please be.
Have we had it for the 49 years you've been around, Mr. O'Leary?
Maybe not. But the thing is, is, you know, I know it takes what, four fifths vote to get money out of this from town meeting, right? Stabilization?
About two thirds.
Just two thirds? Four fifths? Two thirds?
I thought two thirds.
Two thirds, yes.
Four fifths or prior year building. Okay. The two thirds one, but anyway. And it's good, we have other reserve funds for specific purposes and other accounts, which is great. But I just think that a general overall rainy day account, we should be putting more than $250,000 in. But again, I should have introduced this back in the budget discussion, but meantime, anything's better than nothing.
Okay. Did we vote, though? We didn't vote on this yet. We had a motion by Mr. Wallner, a second by Mr. O'Leary before the discussion.
On the stabilization?
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
I'll read it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 6?
Madam Chair, through you, Article 6, transfer of funds to other post-employment benefit fund, plot benefit liability trust fund. The balance stands at $2,897,000, as you see. We are not recommending a transfer under fiscal year 2022 at this time, however, there is a customary raise and appropriate action in a later article out of FY 2023. I should note, and the Finance Director can correct me, again, we spoke to the very recently certified free cash number from the Department of Revenue. Normally, we have that number in hand in October, maybe September. Because of some complications in the process with regard to CARES Act and other funding sources, it's taken quite a long time to get the number certified, but it has been certified at over $5 million. I think, Liz, you had indicated, once we go through all these articles, we're going to have roughly about $400,000 in a balance that will not be obligated. So, you know, we're going through this kind of thinking to ourselves, okay, as we get closer to town meeting, we may need to make an adjustment. And the Finance Director, I don't know if you want to speak to what your recommendation was, but suggested that where we are headed into a significant capital discussion in the fall, perhaps taking whatever balance is left after all of these actions are taken and put it into the capital improvement stabilization fund. So I know as we're going through, we're kind of thinking, okay, how are we spending this funding? After you go through all these votes, there will still be about $400,000 unspoken for. As we get closer to town meeting, we'll probably make that recommendation that it go into the capital improvement stabilization fund for future capital needs. So I just, I wanted to offer that, I should have offered it under Article 3 when we were talking about capital. But we're not recommending a tran, any transfer at this time, and we are recommending that the board take its final action at town meeting, so it'll be recommended at town meeting.
All right. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article 6, fiscal year 2022, transfer of funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second?
Uh, motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
What's our actuary say, we all? What's it up to these days?
We're waiting for, for the latest, the greatest plan, so.
Fifty to sixty?
It was, I want to say sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight million, liability.
Yeah, we need to start saving.
Thank you.
And I thought we had a regular plan on this, where we did this every October town meeting. What happened with that? When's the last time that we, I can't remember.
So we'd make a contribution every June, and so it comes right off the top of the budget process to the tune of $300,000 at this point? And that's just a later article based on the structure of the warrant?
I mean, something is better than nothing, because, you know, we know we're going to have this responsibility, so.
The philosophy of contributing, you know, $250,000, $350,000 a year was, you know, let's stop the bleeding. Now, if we can, we were going to be setting how much we did based upon our new hires and what our liability moving forward from a specific date was, but we, we've gotten away from that, too. But, so again, it, to me, it's, at some point, if you put the tourniquet on there, you start funding moving forward, you're covering that. The rest of it, we're going to be paying as we go anyway through the retirements, through the whole system anyway, so I still think we should get back on track and really look at the numbers as to what our new hires are costing us and what our liability is going to be, and paying that out on an annual basis, along with the back pay, which will take several years to pay off.
Okay, so we are, we have a motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary, recommended town meeting, Article 6. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 7, transfer to solid waste stabilization fund.
Madam Chair, through you, this is an action that we deferred taking at the June 2021 town meeting, intended to make the transfer at the October town meeting, however, free cash was not certified at that point in time, so now we're coming back to this action at this point with free cash certified. And the transfer amount is recommended to be $30,000. Do we ask the board recommend?
Does it recommend?
Well, the board can now recommend, yes.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 7, fiscal year 2022, transfer of funds to solid waste stabilization fund.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
And just, just as far as JRM just got sold, I heard?
They did, yes.
And what's our contract up with them?
Uh, we think have four years, including this upcoming year, left with them based on the extension we signed.
That's helpful.
Yes. So, we're waiting formal notification of the sale.
Good, good.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's recommended. Article 9, select town officers?
Article 8.
Article 8, sorry.
Article 8, I'm so sorry, appropriate funds to participating funding arrangement.
Madam Chair, this is the action we take after the conclusion of the plan year for health insurance, generally taking that, that action in October, however, free cash wasn't certified at that point, now is certified. Again, this dollar amount comes straight out of what our expenditures and what our surplus was under the PFA, representing 70% of the total surplus between the town and the employees. And our recommendations to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 8, fiscal year 2022, appropriate funds to participating fund arrangement fund.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 9.
Article 9 is a customary action. For some reason, it's not bold, but we do recommend the board vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 9, select town officers.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 10, here and act on reports, seems to be standard one as well.
Routine article, we recommend you vote to recommend.
Routine article. Motion?
You recommend? Sorry.
Yes, recommend.
Sorry. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 10, here and act on reports at town offices.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 11, prior year bills, we wait on that one, right?
Yes, our recommendation is that you recommend at town meeting, vote to recommend at town meeting in the article. We are aware of one bill at this point. It is a, an advertising bill from the Conservation Commission, but there may be others, so we ask that you vote to recommend at town meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article 11, prior year bills.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Operating budget.
Madam Chair, through you, Articles 12 through 14 represent the annual operating financing plans, so our recommendation for each of those is to vote to recommend.
I move to recommend at town meeting, Article 12, sorry.
Recommend.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 12, fiscal year 2023, operating budget.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Same for Article 13, Mr. Wallner.
Oh, same thing?
Yes.
I've moved to recommend Article 13, fund retirement obligations.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Same with the next article, you're making a recommendation on that one.
Vote to recommend, yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 14, appropriate funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article 15 is also recommended.
It is, that's correct. It's not highlighted, but it's a recommend and it's a customary article.
Just read it. Yep. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 15, authorized treasurer to enter into compensating balance, balance agreements.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 16, rescind authorization of our, do we have anything to address?
None identified at this time, but we are going to ask the board vote to recommend at town meeting if anything comes up, we'll identify it.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article 16, rescind authorization of our.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 17, the capital plan, 18, building repairs for town buildings, and 19, Chapter 90, highway construction, are all related to our annual capital and extraordinary maintenance costs, and we are recommending that they each be voted to recommend.
Okay.
Vote to recommend. We have to go through this. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 18, fund town building repairs.
Seventeen, seventeen first.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 17, fiscal year 2023, capital expenditures.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 18, fund town building repairs.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then, Madam Chair, I move to recommend at, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 19, authorized Chapter 90, highway construction.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, Article 20 authorizes the Director of Public Works to accept certain easements. It's a routine article, and we recommend the board vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 20, authorize Director of Public Works to accept easements.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, through you, Articles 21 and 22, we are recommending that the board vote to recommend at town meeting. We are not anticipating any requests for funding for either of these litigation matters as healthy balances remain for, for each. However, we continue our conversations with counsel on both matters, and so we recommend votes to recommend at town meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to, sorry, recommend at town meeting, Article 21, appropriate funds for legal expenses, middle high school litigation.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article 22, appropriate funds for legal expenses, 20 Elm Street, litigation.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 23, increasing the amount for disabled veteran property tax exemption. The amount is $400 right now. This would allow us to increase to the statutory maximum of $800 per veteran, and we are recommending that the board vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 23, increased amount for disabled veterans' property tax exemption.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 24, increasing the income limit for the senior property tax deferral program. We are recommending that rather than the current $20,000 income limit, this be set to match the amount set under the state circuit breaker program, both the single head of household and married filing jointly amounts prescribed under state statute. Again, this is for deferral for seniors, so it allows the town to recover the cost at a, at a later point in time. I know the assessor is here, but I do not believe we expect a significant amount of participation in this program. We've not seen much in this program at this point, but that's probably because of the income limit, and we are recommending that we go forward with this matching the circuit breaker. I would note, you know, I know there's some question about, you know, what impact it might have, and we certainly will monitor it over the coming year, and if we see something that is, you know, overly concerning, we have the opportunity to address that at a future town meeting as well. And our recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I vote to recommend Article 24, increase of income limit for senior property tax deferral.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 25, changing the general bylaws relative to alarm systems at the recommendation of the fire chief. We recommend that the board vote to recommend.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 25, amend code, general bylaws, Chapter 11, alarm systems.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 26.
Madam Chair, through you, with the so-called sewer betterment bylaw that was discussed earlier this evening with the Public Works Director, I recognize that the language has, you know, come before the board in its recommended form only over this weekend. The board, we do suggest that the board consider recommending, particularly where it has become the sponsor of the board, but it's certainly within your purview to defer that action until as close to town meeting as you prefer.
To, for, for purposes of what? Getting the correct language in there?
No, if the board's not ready to make that determination, just, oh.
No, I think we're ready.
We already determined, we own it.
We're ready. Do we have a motion?
Okay, so we're going to recommend?
Yep.
I would, you can vote however you want, but, yeah.
Yes, we haven't seen the final language yet, so.
No, we have on, we have on the bylaws. We were going to endorse it, you know, we were going to sponsor it.
We'll have to try to, I guess, amend it, or maybe wait to take a vote at one of the town meetings, I don't know. I don't know, whatever, whatever the majority's prerogative is.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, give us time to vote.
I don't think we, I think we, the vote would be to move, move forward with, we'll at least sponsor it. And then I think there'd be probably language, it's too bad they didn't, we didn't have this before now. It's really backwards to do it this way instead of having it finalized for the evening that we have to vote for. But that's my personal opinion. All right, so.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 26, amend code, general bylaws, assessment of sewer veterans.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 27 is the Swan Pond Forest Street Consultant Appropriate Funds.
That's correct. And Madam Chair, through you, to Mr. Wallner, we have that as an $85,000 expenditure, do I?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, so it was reduced when we took out the design portion of the scope, is that right?
We took out the, yeah, the, the.
Okay, so that will generate another $20,000 in available funds, so we are recommending that the board vote to recommend that article. It's proposed to be funded in the amount of $65,000 by free cash and to be expended by the Forestry Committee.
Change of year.
So the dollar amount is $65,000. The funding source is proposed to be free cash, and it is proposed to be expended by the Forestry Committee, and I am recommending to the Select Board that they vote to recommend. But it's their decision, obviously.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article 27, appropriate funds for Forestry Consultants, Swan Pond Forestry.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. And we have hands raised, so we'll look to our Finance Committee. Mr. Kelleher.
I'm just curious as to where this is going, and, you know, $65,000 or $85, whichever it is, out of, out of free cash, we've got a lot of free cash, it's not a big impact. But the, the impact is, when the consultant comes back and recommends something, and we're looking at a price tag of, I have no idea what it is, but how do we fund it?
Well, what we've learned so far is that, I mean, this is trails. We're not going to be paving, or, I mean, there'll be some creation of parking areas, things of that nature, but it's really pretty minimal infrastructure going inside there, so most of it's going to be more volunteer efforts, people who are going to come volunteer to help improve the trails, maintain the trails, work on the trails. And also, we have a connection with Essex Aggie, potentially them coming in and helping us to do this. So we're planning to do as much as we can to fund it through just goodwill and volunteerism in the town. That's, that's how we plan to do most of the infrastructure work, not all of it, but most of it. But the goal is to get mapping of that area, because there's three different departments, I guess, school committee, conservation committee, and to town own it, so we'd want to get mapping, we'd want to get the trail set up, and we'd want to come up with some sort of a plan about how to make that more accessible for the town, since many people don't even know where Swan Pond is, haven't been there, and part of the open space recreational plan is to, that was our high priority item, was to do that type of work, so.
And does $65,000 cover that, is that what you're saying?
It'll cover almost everything we need, yes. And, and there's potential of grants as well, that we just don't know about that yet, so.
I'm just concerned we're going to then have a multi-hundred thousand dollar proposal to, to do something there.
Projects I've seen.
We just looked at capital.
Can we not, let's just, one at a time and not talk in over each other, too.
Sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that, that, that we would have a multi-hundred thousand dollar proposal to do something, and as we looked at it in capital tonight, there's a whole flock of things that we would like to do, that we haven't done, that are need, that we need to do. And it's, it's, again, the, the wants and the needs, and I think the, if this is that minimal, I don't have a problem, but it gets, gets expensive, like the rail trails, that, that's a problem with, with funding it. If you can't fund it, why do the, the upfront one? What you're saying is that it's a minimal obligation going forward, and I don't have a problem with that.
And I believe that to be the case, and other projects I've seen in the state that do something similar to what we do, it has been minimal funding, so. But if nothing else, we'll have a map, and we'll know our, we'll know our territories, and we'll know, in the future, if we decide to do something, we'll have that, because that won't change over time.
My understanding of the presentation, though, is that we just want to take the first, the first steps to, you know, you know, making these, what is called as conceptual plans by this.
Yes.
And that there would be an ability to solicit for grant funding, to do some improvements that make it accessible, not vol, I didn't hear anything about volunteers, other than the gentleman who's the chair of the committee who's been volunteering in that area for, I guess, decades, but I didn't understand it to be a volunteer effort. And I did understand it to be trying to, it seems expensive to do this, but trying to, to make it designed to be more accessible to the, to the public. And that, you know, there would, this would also entail getting together with residents and notifying residents and getting their input on it, too, through mailings and meetings and things like that, so. But, I don't know if there's any, this is terrible, but you had your hand raised, too. Did you have any question on it?
I was curious, has Germany acres in the, in this town forest?
I don't know, the, so, I just don't know. Yeah.
He did mention that, but I.
Enough for a reservoir.
It was like twenty, I forget what it is. We do have these amazing gems in our community. We have Marnes Pond and Swan Pond.
I believe it's fairly small.
I thought it was large, though. I thought it was large, though. I forget what he said, but acres were.
I know that the, well, my house is an acre, it's not a town.
Acres, many acres, like twenty, I thought.
The forest committee used to be, say, twenty-five or thirty years ago, very active. There were remnants of it, or any material to the house. So, this is, it was nice that they made a piece of one of the towns proper.
Okay, so we, we have, I think we had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. The motion was to recommend.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-seven.
Madam Chair, through you, I will just note more for the record, for those who are watching. We do not have an article on here relative to the rail trail pursuant to the board's vote at the last meeting to remove it from the warrant.
All right, thank you. So, we have to move on to our next order of business, which is a vote to extend temporary outdoor dining. How did that lean down our agenda with all?
Madam Chair, through you.
Thank you to the members of the. Thanks for hanging on.
Thank you, folks.
Yes, we usually don't have company, so thank you, although we have that.
Mr. Mills, congratulations to your son.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Kate gave us a whole rundown, but it's fantastic.
Yeah, amazing. This is amazing. Good night, good night. Mrs. Gilberto, for the outdoor dining, what do we want to vote on that? Till extended to when?
Under the statute, to April 21st of 2023, so it's another year. Our last extension, which was approved, I think, in the fall of last year, expired on April 1st of this year. We have been approached by a restaurant that wishes to resume having temporary outdoor dining, so in response to that request, we are back here requesting a further extension.
Do we have a motion?
We do. Madam Chair, I move to extend previously approved permits for temporary outdoor dining to April 1st, 2023, subject to requests being made by the permit holders and approved by regulatory departments.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thanks, Liz.
Legal bills.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for March 2022 in the amount of $20,577.85 as follows. General, $6,270.35. Labor, $5,002.20. Twenty Elm Street, $9,368.52. For a total of $20,577.85.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Town administrators report.
Madam Chair, through you, as was referenced earlier, the Department of Public Works has informed me that there is a substantial backlog in the processing of orders for the pay-as-you-throw bags required for the proposed pay-as-you-throw program within solid waste. Therefore, the pay-as-you-throw option will not be able to be implemented until November 1st of this year, along with the other new Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection restrictions in what can be disposed of in the solid waste stream. I attached a copy of a flyer that will be circulating in the coming weeks to just inform folks that the change is coming, but that the date will be a bit later than initially anticipated. We will continue to provide you updates, and we will propose a modification of the board's previous vote to implement the program on July 1st at an upcoming meeting, just to have everything be in order. We do not intend to change any existing enforcement procedures during the interim period, and therefore, the public should experience no change in service during that time up until November 1st. Secondly, this is a follow-up to a conversation I know we had at the end of the last select board meeting. As has previously been discussed, the land utilization committee is seeking to apply for a Mass Department of Transportation grant funding for design of a potential recreational trail. I attached a copy of a sample application from a previous submission filled out by Mr. Hertz, which will need to be updated to reflect where the project actually stands today, and I know he is working on that. Mass DOT is seeking a letter from me designating a town hall contact, a draft of which I also attached to my report here, since the application is being submitted by a committee. In order to preserve the potential for the town to receive grant funding and to allow for the land utilization committee to address issues related to the exact route, I intend to issue a letter designating a town hall contact, the person to be determined this week, but I do not intend to sign a grant contract if awarded or to authorize a purchase order to expend the funds until either there's a town meeting vote approving the funding for design or advisory approval of the expenditure of the grant funding. Alternatively, if the board, select board and the land utilization committee request that I execute such grant agreement, I would also consider that. I expect that Mr. Hertz is going to submit the grant in time for the May 16th deadline, and just want to be upfront with the board, you know, this is one where we don't often have much conversation of the grant applications before they're going in, but, you know, for the ease of the abutters and the residents who I know are trying to work through concerns with the land utilization committee, there is no intent to execute any grant agreement to expend grant funds beyond what is already in the town's hands for this until these issues are resolved. So, I just wanted to be clear with the public on that. And then, finally, and notably for all of us here who will be leaving the town hall after this meeting, water main construction on Main Street does continue, with night work having begun last night. Going through, we believe, Friday morning, May 13th at 5:00 a.m. Work hours will be from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., and I attached a copy of an announcement and map from DPW and police. So, to the board members, we will not be able to get across Main Street. At North Street here, we'll have to go down to Winter Street to get out or further, because it'll be closed for construction, so, sorry for the bad news.
We'd have to go to where?
Either to Lowell and Winter or Park Street to cross over Main Street.
So, you can't take sixty?
Can't take North Street. You can take 62.
No, can't take 62 and get over the, you know, where it gets onto Main Street?
Yes. But you can't, you won't.
You can get home.
But you won't be able, I don't think you'll be able to turn, though.
You two are going to be deterred.
Turn where, to the right?
We're going to be around the world to go home.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't need to. You, you two have the.
Okay. Are we all set? Any questions for Mr. Gilberto? Okay, board, oh, let's do board member and all the new business all together. Mr. O'Leary.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the respectful and sincere outreach and expressions of sympathy shown by my colleagues here, administrative staff here at town hall, and of course, the community at large for acknowledging the recent passing of my sister-in-law Janet, my brother Paul's wife, which was very unexpected and, you know, about five weeks' worth of agony. But anyway, we live in a beautiful community here, and the outreach and support that's been offered and expressions of sympathy and respect that was shown, has been shown and will continue to be shown, is greatly appreciated and acknowledged by my brother and the rest of our family, so I thank you all very much for that. The other thing I'd like to just mention is we had an election. Welcome back. Welcome back. And again, turnout, 14%, okay. I guess the only thing I want to say is that for those that turned out, and for those that participated, again, I think the electorate made some very good choices in relation to what they had for choices for candidates, particularly for school committee. I think there's a small group of people that have been, recent times, very disruptive, and I found it interesting that candidate that I happen to find, in my personal opinion, the most disruptive, tried to opt out at the last minute. And again, it's just indicative of not being involved on a regular basis, not looking to get involved and work within the process and within the system that we have, and, again, kind of the same group of people that costing, that cost the town a significant amount of money for free information requests and all the rest. And I want to thank the public for being somewhat energized, so I'll give that candidate at least some credit for energizing the public to the extent that the disruption that was caused by his candidacy caused some concern in the community where they felt as though they had to come out and participate. And for that, I'm appreciative of that, anyway. But, you know, the nonsense should stop, and a lot of money is being wasted, and resources, human resources are being wasted, and if they want to get involved, they're welcome, you know? There are forums, and there are ways in which they can be involved. I encourage them to do so, and I thank the general public who participated in the election for making some wise choices, and grateful for you two people being returning and willing to serve on the board, too, and I look forward to the upcoming term of serving there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wallner.
I'll just add one thing. When we had to swear back in, we already sworn back in, yeah?
I hope so.
When you do the swearing, it's constitutionally, I support the Constitution of the United States, I support the state laws, and I support my local town laws. And I'm wondering how disruptors could have ever done that, based on what I heard. So, it was just a reminder to me about what you're signing up for, being a public official, you know, being elected official. You've got to support what's out there, even if you disagree with it, you know, you've got to go with what, you've got to work within the system, not outside. So, anyways, that's the only thing I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Studo.
I have the, so the Business Summit is going to be May 24th from 5:30 to 7:30, and we will be doing the horseshoe again, because if we looked at every, you know, the limited availability that we have in town, but it seems that if we did, if we did end up with more people, which we hope we do, invitations went out, and if you didn't get invitation, there's RSVP, there's a link, I believe, that we can get you an invite through either us, one of the EDC members, or Danielle McKnight, the town planner, and we're going to do that, because they, as you know, they have a nice big room, and especially if we can open it up, people usually prefer to be outside for various reasons right now, so, but yeah, so we have the location again. We had a great turnout last year. There's going to be a lot of information, so our own will be guest speaking, hopefully, ones where it's time to the left looking down at his computer right now. And, yeah, it should be, it should be fun again, but this time, very informative, because as we discussed earlier, there's some pretty big projects that we're trying to break through the pipeline, so it's just as many hits as possible to have a conversation with the public and the business community, and.
Madam Chair, excuse me, there's the ability to register, or RSVP through the homepage, www.northwritingma.gov. There's a link right on the homepage.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez. I would just like to thank everybody who came out to vote for me. Although I was unopposed, I still appreciate everybody who came out and made the effort. And again, no one says to be very, you know.
Okay, and I just want to add one thing for Memorial Day. They are going to do a parade again this year, so hopefully, all the members, we can all get together and march together and with the TA, and if you want to bring a wagon with your kids and, you know, tote your kids.
Is my road street going to be paved?
Mrs. Gilberto did that one there. That was fun. And there's a bicycle contest that they, the moderator chooses the best decorated bicycle for the occasion, and the, it's a, it's finally, I don't think we marched together for a while, so it's a nice thing. And the parade manager asked at one of the candidates' nights if one of the members could do the regards for the board, and I did ask Mrs. Gonzalez to do, to just give a few remarks when we gather at the bottom of the town common or for that. It's a nice service, and it's something, doesn't take a lot, but it's a nice thing to get together. If we can get together as a board and attend, that would be wonderful. I don't have specific details, but I'm sure they'll be forthcoming. I'm sure they'll reach out.
Will circulate.
The second thing, just keep trying to adapt, actually. The liaison assignments, I'm primarily going to keep them the same. I might be shifting a couple of Mrs. Gonzalez's with Mr. Studos, but primarily keeping everything as it's going, because everybody's rolling through what they're doing and really invested in their assignment, so if that's all right, I'm going to keep them almost status quo, but I'll get that, I will get that updated and to the TA to share with the board members. So, that's my only other comment, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do. Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second that.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Well done, Mr. Wallner.